Okay, I'd like to call to order the Select Board of January 5th, 2023 at 6:32 PM. And I'd like to start by having the Assistant Town Administrator read the executive session agenda.
Good evening. Now that the Board, the Board has called the meeting to order, they'll vote to go into executive session for item number one, which is discussion with Labor Council regarding the collective bargaining strategy for negotiations with AFSC Council 93, Local 335, the DPW Bargaining Unit pursuant to General Law Chapter 30A, Section 2 and A, pursuant to General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A and 7, to comply with our act under the authority of any general or special law of federal grant and aid requirements, Public Records Law, General Laws, Chapter 4, Section 7 and 26, discuss privileged legal opinion regarding DPW Bargaining Unit CBA from Labor Council. Item two, strategy session to prepare for contract negotiations with non-bargaining employee pursuant to General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, Lieutenant's Position, the Police Department. Item number three, strategy session to prepare for contract negotiations with non-bargaining employee pursuant to General Law Chapter 30A, Section 2 and A, the Fire Chief. You'll need a second and a roll call vote to go into executive session.
Okay, before I do, are there any revisions, proposed revisions to the agenda? Okay, do I have a motion with respect to the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda, Executive Session as read.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay. Marion?
I.
George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
And I am I as well. And I do declare the need to move to executive session to discuss these three items as read. So I move that we move to executive session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Marion?
I.
George?
Hi.
Paul? Eric?
Hi.
And I am I as well. So let's turn the recording and you let everybody in. So I now like to apologize for delay where executive session ran over a bit. So I now like to open the Sherburne Select Board meeting of January 20, January 5th, 2023 at 7:20 PM. And I'd like to ask the Assistant Town Administrator to read the open session agenda, please.
Good evening. After I read the agenda, the Select will can vote to either approve the agenda or amend the agenda as written. There is no public comment that I'm aware of tonight. Item number one is the consent agenda, which is the payroll warrant. And the next scheduled meeting for the Select Board is January 19th, 2023. Item number two is consideration of approving and executing a consolidated CBA agreement with the DPW Local 93 for FY 22 through 2024. Item number three is consideration of a request for a 60-day extension to 4-1, 2023, pertaining to the Verizon license renewal. Attorney Bill Solomon is here, along with, I believe, Doug Ambos, and maybe somebody from the Sherbin Cable Actions Corporation. Item number four is consideration of signing the aggregation contract for the town of Sherbin. Fred Cunningham and the Energy Sustainability Committee is here. Item number five is the fire station solar project letter of intent. Michael Lesser and Gino Calucci will be here to present that. Item number six is consideration of appointments. Deb Seffering, our interim Finance Director, is up for another 60-day reappointment. Number seven is the implementation of the Sherbin Police Department policies, and Chief Thomas Gavilla will be here to explain all that. Item number eight is the consideration of an updated and expanded Assistant Town Administrative Job Description. Item number nine is the 2023 Annual Town Meeting, revised Annual Town Meeting timetable. Budget meeting date with the Select Board that's up tonight for discussion is for Saturday, January 14th, starting at 8:30 AM and possibly being hybrid. Item number, next item is FY 2024 Omnibus Budget Guidance Memo to the Budgetmakers and Elected Officials. Item number 10 is review of draft warrant articles. The assessors, consideration of a new specialized stretch energy code. Gino Calucci and Brad Corrales is here. Article discussion on the possibility of combining the Treasury Collector Offices and the review of the current draft warrant checklist and draft annual town meeting warrants. Item number 11 is the Washington Street Sherbin Homes 40B discussion regarding sending the comment letter to DCHD. And item number 12 is consideration of routine business, which is Select Board reports and Town Administrator reports.
Thank you, Diane. Do I have any recommended revisions to the agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as read? That's good job, Marion. You need to unmute yourself, but I saw you say so. Move. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Marion?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Paul? I got it. And Eric?
Hi.
And I am I as well. So the agenda is approved as read. Do I have a motion with respect to the consent agenda?
Move approval.
Second?
Second.
Marion?
I.
George?
Hi.
Paul? Eric?
Hi.
And I am I as well. Okay, so we in executive session discussed the DPW collective bargaining agreement. Do I have a motion to approve the, which was in our pack at the collective bargaining agreement?
Yeah, consolidated. I'll make a motion to approve and execute the consolidated CBA agreement.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Marion?
I.
George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
And I am I as well. That sounds good. Do you want to briefly introduce this, Bill? I saw you there somewhere. We're working with Bill Solomon to try and draft the renew, renewal for the Verizon license. We're meeting with Verizon Attorney tomorrow, our first meeting with Verizon's attorney, and we hope to meet in a week or so with Verizon to, but we have some language that we've proposed for license renewal. But do you want to just, just a quick recap? Bill, not a detailed discussion, please?
Yeah. Shiving. I'll survive. Thank you. Yeah, so as noted for the chair, we are negotiating with Verizon. We provided them a complete license in response. Well, we provided a license, they provided one back. Now, we've sent revisions to theirs. We're meeting tomorrow. Excuse me. We hope to hear if, you know, if they will introduce the parties because they haven't met in person. We hope to see here if there's some open issues that they want to raise in preparation for our next meeting. Verizon is meeting, Attorney Paul Train is representing Verizon. They'll be meeting with the Verizon Corporate on some of the larger issues next, next week. And then we'll meet with Paul thereafter. So, you know, we think we're in a good spot. We, the committee, the negotiating team rather, has looked at all of the issues, the financial issues, the legal issues, the policy issues. We have Dover Sherbin Community Television represented by Mike Klein, the Town Administrator, the Assistant Town Administrator, and the Chair. So we did an extension about a month ago until the end of January, January 31st. But this license will, to complete, will need a little more time, in part because Verizon has both the local folks and the New York corporate folks, both legal and financial, that, that takes some time. So we have a motion here to ask the Board to authorize myself as Special Counsel to enter an agreement with Verizon extending the time of the license and the negotiating period from January 31st, 2023, for a period of up to 60 days, so up to April 1st, 2023, to protect the interest of Verizon, the town, the public. It's in the town's interest, so I recommend we, you vote authorizing me to enter that, and we'll discuss the term of that, whether it's 60 days or shorter. We think 60 days is fine. We'll discuss that term issue with Attorney Paul Train tomorrow in a video call. So if you have to answer any questions, but I think at this point, the town's done all the work it needs to do, and it's a question of negotiating any open issues with Verizon. We'll know more about that tomorrow.
Anybody have any questions? Go ahead, Paul.
I was gonna move the motion, you just said.
Go ahead. Is there a second? So we're approving a motion of up to 60 days. We know that Verizon thinks we won't need that long, but we haven't been able to get much out of them, so we're allowing a little extra time. Hopefully it'll be less. Do I have a second to Paul's motion?
I'll second.
All right, Marion?
I.
George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
And I am I as well. Thank you very much, Bill.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you for remembering.
See you tomorrow.
We will. Thank you. Bye-bye. Good night.
All right, good night. All right, we're moving on to signing the aggregation contract, and Fred Cunningham is here. I believe I saw me with us, Fred. You unmuted. There you are.
Off mute. Yes, I am with you. Thank you.
Good to see you.
I will need to share my screen, so if the host could allow me to do that, that'd be great.
I think you're good. I think you're all set.
Okay, let me get there. Okay, if I can get that out of the way, I can actually put it into presentation mode. There we go. Oh, come on. Okay. Hopefully you're seeing my screen, yes?
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, thank you all very much for putting us on the agenda tonight. We wanted to give you a status update on electrical aggregation. Where are we and where are we headed? I'm joined tonight with two other members of the sub-team on aggregation from the Energy and Sustainability Committee, Andy Lauterbach and Tom Trainer. And just for the sake of moving this along, I'm gonna stop saying Energy and Sustainability Committee and just say ESC from here on, otherwise we'll be here till midnight. We wanted to accomplish three things this evening. One is to give you an update on the accomplishments to date, but especially focusing on from here forward, what happens with aggregation, because things may start to move very quickly at some point, and we need to be ready for that. We'll need to clarify the bidding process, which is very specific in aggregation. And out of that, we'll be requesting a vote authorizing the Town Administrator to actually execute the final contract. And we'll talk about that a bit as we get closer to that why. Just to refresh your memory, the main goals of aggregation, aggregation, aggregation are to provide choices in the level of renewables in the electricity mix and to provide price stability in the electricity supply to our citizens. Overall, our goal is to reduce carbon emissions from Sherbin, and over 140 towns in Massachusetts have done exactly that through aggregation. I will welcome questions, but I would ask, if possible, to hold them to the end of the presentation so we can get through this relatively quickly. Accomplishments to date. I don't want to spend much time on this, but I want to remind us of where we are and where we came from. In August of 2020, Town Meeting voted to pursue electrical aggregation, and that put us into action, the ESC into action. The ESC and the Select Board selected Mass Power Choice as our aggregation consultants. And I've got to say, they have been wonderful. Without them, I'm not sure how successful we would have been because they really know both the market and what the approving groups like the DPU, Department of Public Utilities, require. Out of that, the ESC and Mass Power Choice developed detailed aggregation plans and supporting documentation. That took quite a while because of regulations and what DPU is looking for are very distinct. And then we had several outreach activities for public comment on those plans. That was all completed in December, late December 2020. So in January of 2021, we were able to start our submissions. The first submission has to be to the Department of Energy Resources, DUR, and once they have reviewed it and signed off on it, it goes to the Department of Public Utilities. So they finished their review in late April, early May. So in May of 2021, we were able to make the required submission to the Department of Public Utilities. Sometime in last summer, July, August, we had a number of communications with the Department of Public Utilities over a bunch of requested changes. As they have been working with other towns' submissions for aggregation, they've been changing their process, they've been changing some of the requirements. For the most part, we responded to those requests by accepting them, but we did push back on a couple that seemed either redundant or of little or no value to the consumers. We are now sitting in January of 2022, and we are still awaiting DPU approval. Mass Power Choice has been in contact with the DPU several times, but they have refrained from giving any advice on the potential timing. And that's why we're here tonight, because in fact, we could get approval within weeks, or this week, or it could be months. We just don't know, and they're not telling us. So we need therefore to be prepared to go into action at any time. Once the view approval happens, things start to move. Mass Power Choice will go out to electrical suppliers and get what are called indicative bids from a variety of suppliers. Now, indicative bids are what they sound like. They're an indication of where the market is at that time, and they'll give us the information we need to start thinking about the kinds of choices that we want to actually offer in Sherbin Power Choice. Now, we know, or we believe, we'll probably have an offering that mirrors Eversource at 22% renewables, which is required of them in 2023, and we're hoping also to offer in 100% renewable. So if we are going to offer a third tier, it will be somewhere in between and what it will be the balance between price and the amount of renewables we want to use. That will start to involve the Select Board in making decisions. And those decisions generally, as we're reviewing the indicative bids, Mass Power Choice's recommendation is that we complete that within two weeks. And the reason for that is the market keeps moving. And it could be that if we took a month or two to review it and get back to the suppliers for the final bids, that things could have moved enough to kind of offset our plans. Now, I'm gonna review the kinds of decisions that the Select Board will be needing to make, but those can't be made tonight because we don't have the data. But we wanted to give you a heads up so you could start thinking about this in advance. One of the decisions to be made, which I kind of hinted to a moment ago, is in the center of the renewables of 22% and 100%, we'll have some choices. When the indicative prices come in, we can look and say, if we added 10%, the price would be this. 20%, the price would be that, and we can look for that balance between pricing and our desire to cut emissions. And that guidance will go to the person signing the final contract. We also will need at that point to be clear about, sorry, go ahead. Oh, just a cough, okay. We'll also need to make a choice at what the default will be for people to be automatically enrolled in. And you may remember, in Massachusetts, aggregation plans are opt-out. People are automatically enrolled if they are an Eversource customer. They're automatically enrolled in default, and we'll need to decide what that default is. Would it be the bottom, the top, the middle? We'll need to talk that over. There's also an opportunity to add a one thousandth of one cent per kilowatt hour adder for energy conservation. What that means is basically it creates a small fund. We're a small town, it's not gonna be a lot of money, but it creates a small fund that can be used towards energy conservation. It couldn't, for instance, be used towards a pollinator garden. That's not energy conservation. It couldn't be used towards replacing a culvert. But there are many, many things in the Sustainability Department that come under the auspices of energy conservation. We'll also want to give some guidance to the person signing the final contract. It could be guidance simply about if the prices come in this way, then we want to back off. Or if the prices come in this way, then go for more renewables or less, whatever that criteria are. And then the last thing, and Mass Power Choice will be very instrumental in helping us with this because they have their thumb on the market, is what length of contract based on our best guess about what's going to happen in the market. Right now, as you all know, electricity prices are pretty high. If we believe that we're gonna come down in a year, we wouldn't sign a contract longer than a year. But if we, if the feeling was that the market's going to stay high or go higher, we might take a longer contract. Some towns have gone out as far as three years. So those are the decisions we'll need to make in the future. We just wanted to give you a heads up about those. Once we have reviewed the indicative bids, then the second kind of bid comes in, which is called executable. That's the final pricing being offered by the suppliers. And here's the kicker, action is required within hours. The suppliers don't let you sit on those executable bids for any period of time because the market keeps moving. So we'll talk about why, what needs to happen as a result of that. But then the contract is signed, and we go into implementation mode. I wanted to briefly remind you what happens in implementation mode so that you're aware of it. First of all, Mass Power Choice is the one who gives ongoing support once the program launches, and before, they've been giving us plenty of support so far. Once that program launches, so people should not be calling Town Hall to change their level of, or ask any questions really, but they will. People don't always read their information packets. So we'll train the town staff or instruct them on how to simply direct all inquiries to Mass Power Choice. Don't try to answer them yourself. During this time period, and it will be about two months between contract execution and the actual program launch, and that time is used to give information to the public. There'll be an information packet sent out very quickly to all households. And that packet, because at this point, we will know pricing, we'll know levels of renewables that are available, we'll know what the default is, and we'll know how to opt-in or out or change your level within Sherbin Power Choice. That information packet will go to all households. There'll also be press releases, newspaper articles. We'll be updating several websites. There'll be social media postings, and we're even talking about maybe doing a TV video that could be posted on DSTV and YouTube. Did want to say that, just to remember that we actually do have websites already that are being updated as we get more information. That includes the Sherbin Power Choice website. It includes the Sustainability Department's website and the Sustainability Department and ESC's pages on the town website. So there's a lot of websites to update, but they're there already for people who are interested in finding out more. They, we are committed, per our plan, to two public presentations on implementation of Sherbin Power Choice, and that will basically cover the same stuff as in the information packet. What are my choices? What are the levels of renewable? What about pricing? What about opting out or changing my level within Sherbin Power Choice? And then lastly, an opt-out postcard will be sent to all residents. And that postcard can simply be checked off and returned if you want it to change your level from, from the default. But there'll also be a phone number and a website to go and make those changes. So there are three ways to shift yourself within Sherbin Power Choice or leave it altogether. And then enrollment begins, as I said, approximately about two months out. If you're an Eversource customer, you will be enrolled automatically in the default. If you already have a supplier, independent supplier, you will have to actually sign up for Sherbin Power Choice. And then, as I said before, all ongoing support is provided by MPC, who will work with the electric supplier. Okay, so that brings us to our request for this evening. Our request for this evening is based on those executable bids, which are the final offers from suppliers and are only valid literally for a few hours. Our aggregation plan noted that the Town Administrator will be authorized to execute the contract on executable bids. And that's pretty much standard procedure for towns. Most of the towns in the area have the Town Administrator, Jeremy, in our case, do the actual final signing, based, of course, on the decisions and discussions that the Select Board has during the indicative bidding period and their guidance. So this evening, the Energy and Sustainability Committee requests that the Select Board votes to authorize the Town Administrator, Jeremy, to sign the executable contract when it comes in. Thank you for your time, and if you have any questions, we can take them now.
So I have a question.
You can probably stop sharing though, Fred, so we can see the whole.
Yep, I'm about to do that.
That's a great, great job though. Thanks for doing that.
Well, I tried, I tried to power through it, so I know you're running late.
No, no, it was very well done and organized. Go ahead, Paul.
Well, first, let me say thank you for a great presentation and great service to the town. This is gonna be very beneficial to all the residents. And as you pointed out, people can opt out if they don't want to be involved. So it's a wonderful opportunity. You may save a lot of money. We may be able to improve the environment, and if people want out, they can, they can opt out. My question is, I do this kind of work for other communities, and I'm, when this, the town, before the, I'm asking a Town Administrator, before he signs the paperwork, they just send me a copy so I can see if there's anything in there that's not standard or off what other communities are doing.
I think that would be a good procedure. It will literally be hours for a response, but I think that's a great idea. Thank you, Paul.
I would talk. I was gonna make a comment. Hi, it's Michael Lesser. I was just gonna make the comment that I think we should be able to get a copy of what the contract will look like ahead of time, and it'll just be some specific terms there. So Paul and anybody else, and even our Town Council should be able to see that, the boilerplate of the contract ahead of time, so that there shouldn't be any questions. We should be able to answer all the, our questions before we even get the executable prices, because we'll see it before.
That's true, so it really will be just a pricing difference.
Yeah.
Thank you. Marion, you have your hand up?
All right, the indicative bid process is a period during which the Select Board are gonna have to make some decisions, you say. Your, your, the presentation was terrific, but in the end, I don't have a clear picture of exactly what that indicative bid process is, how long it will take, how much time you have to do the education of the Select Board and the public during that time. Would you clarify that?
Sure. We will try to time indicative bids coming in when the Select Board is going to have a meeting soon, so that we actually go have that time. Education of the public doesn't really happen until after indicative bids, because that's when we know the data. Indicative bids are an indication, and we make guidance based on that, but we won't have the final information until the executable bids come in. Does that answer your question?
I guess I'm looking for a clearer definition of indicative bids. Is this kind of preliminary?
Yes.
Ballpark bids that you're getting from?
They are, they are bids based on what the market is that day. So they're, they're based on real data, but data that the market can shift over time. That's why we're saying it's best to try and get it done in two weeks. But indicative bids are an indication, and they're usually a pretty good indication of what's actually gonna happen, but they're not the final bids.
Right. I would say, I'll add to that, Marion, that I think something we'll try to do that we hadn't talked about much before is that we should be able to get examples of what indicative bids look like before we actually go out for our indicative bids, so that we could actually have a, that we ourselves can educate ourselves at the, at the Energy and Sustainability Committee along with the Select Board and the Town Administrator. We can, we can ask the consultants to give us an example of what they all look like, so that we're, we see what the format's gonna be, what kind of, what kind of information it's given, so that we'll be, all be better educated before we actually go out there.
Yeah, that would be useful because, you know, you indicated that even the indicative bids have to be acted on fairly quickly. We don't have a lot of time to think about it, so we need to be prepared.
Yes, you're absolutely right. And the indicative bids do not have to be acted on quickly. You could take months to review, but as you do that, the market is shifting, and who knows where we end up. But that's a good point, Michael. I'm sure we can get some examples. They wouldn't be promises for our pricing, but it would certainly show us what we'll be looking at when the indicative bids come in.
Right, and we can also, right, as Fred said, we don't, if we're not sure or whatever else, and we don't have to take it, or, or maybe we miss it and we have to get another set of indicative bids. I think they're, they're used to doing that kind of thing there, so we can, we can, it's not gonna be a pressured situation.
Sean, you had a question?
Go ahead, Sean.
Sorry, I, well, I had a question. I had a question and a comment. You, you might have actually just answered the comment. Nothing in municipal government happens in hours. So public trust erodes really quickly when you say something that needs to happen, and the Town Administrator needs to sign something within hours. That, that, I don't even live in that world. It makes no sense to me. But the question that I had, which is very relevant, is I, I was on the board, and I remember at least the lead-up to the Town Meeting vote, and I thought specifically we had an opt-in, not an opt-out on the aggregation.
No, we've actually never said that. We've said just the opposite. It is by law opt-out. So we have no option about opting in.
Okay, we definitely discussed it quite a bit, so.
Right, but there's no way we could have gone, there's no way we could have gone the other way because it's just legally not possible.
Okay, so that'll be really clear in the postcard that you send to the residents, Okay, so that'll be really clear in the postcard that you send to the residents, that they're automatically in?
Yeah, oh yes. Yeah, the whole education cycle is to to help them understand that and how to move within Sherwin Power Choice or leave it altogether.
Thanks.
And people have the chance, if they miss that window, they'll always have the chance to opt out. It's not like a uh, i- it's not like a one-shot deal, so that if somebody misunderstood. Or they took too long, or they took a while, and even if they got put in the program, they could opt out with the, within a month or so. Um, so delay or something like that. So I, i- it's not a uh, it's not a time-sensitive issue to decide on even.
There's a lot of people that don't understand this, and I'm, you know, I've, I've been involved in this in quite a, for quite a while since it started and I don't understand it. So I don't analyze my bill to the point where I would see that, and I think a lot of residents, I'm, I'm, I'm certain the COA would have that concern. That their residents may not really understand what they, what they signed up for without signing up.
Yep, and and again, one of the presentations that we have committed to is to the Council of Aging. Uh, it'll be a public opening, open meeting, but it would also uh be directed directly at their clientele.
Might even be able to run it on ticket on, if you talk to my client on Dover Sherwin Cable TV or something, so that people can access it. Or we could put your slides on the website or wherever you, whatever would help you communicate, we're willing to do.
It's been a long time of sitting around waiting for the DPU to respond. But once they do, we go into overdrive in terms of of public education, and that's where those two months really count.
Yep. Uh, I think Andy has uh his hand up.
Yeah, thanks you, thanks Jeff. Yeah, I have a question for the select board, and that is, what do you recommend? The process to be, once we get the indicative bids in order to get your full input on. What we choose as far as the three levels and which one should be the default option? Uh, cuz it, it might be too late to get on the next agenda, uh, your next meeting's agenda. So I just wanted to get a sense as to how you suggest we proceed with that.
Well, it actually relates to a question I have, so I'm glad you brought that up, which is um. Wh- when you say we get these bids, are we still often talking about the same menu of tiers of percent? Renewable, and then it's just different pricing for the tier? In other words, if we had a menu of choices and. You're gonna get a cheeseburger or a hamburger or, you know, a salad, but the prices were different. At least we knew what the menu was gonna look like and the prices changed. Is that more or less an analogy that would make sense?
Right, yeah, to a degree. It's, it's a, it's sort of more a balancing of scales.
Yes.
If we have uh. Price sensitive, heavy price sensitivity, the. Tipped towards lower pricing.
Yeah.
We really wanna put renewables in, the scale would tip towards renewable.
Yeah, so, so if we knew kind of, I think that's what Michael Lester was saying also, if we kind of knew the. What the structure would look like, even we didn't have the bids in yet, that would allow us to respond quicker. But the select board meets every two weeks. So you can always get on our agenda within a two-week period, and so the average would probably be a week. Depending on, you don't know when you're gonna hear, but.
Yeah, and and that, that's what I said before, we will attempt, we, we can. We can time when we go out and say we'd like indicative bids.
But if we had, uh, like, say we created a, a, a straw version of our own without even having the bids, and we could then. Do what you said and say, do we want the midpoint of the range? And we can debate with each other, do we want the midpoint or range? We won't know until we get the bids, indicative bids, what the range is, but we could see where we lie on that spectrum.
And I think that goes to Michael's uh comment that we can get out uh from MPC, we can easily get.
Yeah.
Uh, what a, a real indicative bid looked like.
Yeah, yeah.
Pricing wouldn't be the same, but at least we all kind of get used to the idea. That's a good thing.
I think that we can have a, run a straw poll here and uh make it more efficient when we finally get the bids, so.
Good point, yeah.
But we meet, we meet pretty often, like I said, it's not one, twice a month, it's every two weeks. So you can get on the agenda there.
Thank you. Tom, did you have a question?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to reiterate with what both you and I think Andy mentioned. Uh, some of the questions about the timing, we do understand two weeks is short. Two hours is short, and in Sean's comments are well taken. But uh, once we get the DPU approval. Then we can decide when to ask for indicative bids. So we were thinking of asking a couple, you know, a week or a couple days before, you know, one of your scheduled meetings. And then we'll have, you know, those sets of numbers for the uh, the general price levels. When we get those, MPC will, will provide us uh some good comparative uh data. Uh, when it comes to things like the percent renewables. You know, we won't, we won't, won't know where we wanna fall, you know, price-wise. You know, do we want the mid-level forty-five percent, sixty-five percent? But MPC will put together like a chart showing uh, you know, price versus percent renewable. So those are the kind of things that you'll be, you'll have in your hands when we bring these things to you, so. We can time when we get the indicative bids, and uh then we, we know uh. Uh, once you make some decisions, we will ask for the executable bids, that, that's when we know. Jeremy will have to uh respond quickly, and if you don't like. If Jeremy and you don't like what comes back to uh the town for the executables. You can, you can uh choose not to uh, to uh sign the contract and time it. Some, go back to the market sometime later, when you, when you think the market is heading in a better uh direction, so.
Sean asked a good question in the chat, uh, will all the town accounts automatically be enrolled then? Are municipal accounts included or no?
I can't actually answer that at the moment cuz I don't know what the towns, uh, Michael, you know?
Uh, I think, I think the town, I can't tell if the town still has some of its own contracts. Uh, I can't remember now. They had them in the past. I'm not sure what the current status is. But we'll figure that out.
We'll figure that out. We have the solar panels that we're gonna talk about in a minute, and also the ones in the DPW garage already, so. We have the meter running reverse sometimes, I think, too, so.
We only wish, but not, not, not much.
Uh, Mary Ann, you had a question?
Mary Ann has her hand up, yep.
A quick suggestion, uh, you know, trying to, uh, always thinking ahead, trying to figure, you know, what could be done now to prepare, what can be done? One of the things that I think could be done at any time for the public, say nothing to the select board. Is to uh, put out some examples of what the range of price differences are uh right now. Uh, and, or, you know, two weeks from now or whatever. Uh, the range must kind of move as, as a, a range unit, if you like. So there's a high of uh all renewables, there's a low of the twenty-five percent renewable. And it'd be good to see what the curve looks like in between those two, so we're a little more prepared when it does come out.
Yeah, we're, we're planning a meeting with the consultants next week to do just that.
Okay.
It's one of the things we've talked to them about getting as well as uh, and where you can uh, so, we, so we can see what the trends are.
We'll also ask them at that time, Paul, for a sample contract that you could at least look at.
Thank you.
Sounds, sounds good.
Great.
Ask any other questions. Thank you, Fred.
You're welcome, and, and don't forget our request. We would love a vote tonight, if possible.
All right, we, it's not urgent, but yes, it would help. It's one thing in the, in the whole list of things.
Can I make the motion to authorize town administrator to, to sign?
To sign once we have the executable bids?
Yes.
Do, do we have a second?
Uh, yeah.
So Marion?
Second.
Yep, and you, you vote, Marion?
Oh, aye.
George?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
And I am I as well. So you're good to go.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Go ahead, Paul. Michael, you're up, but sorry to take you away from ConCom, but uh. You're the one that's presenting the um, the solar project and the fire station, right?
Sure, let me just give you a quick update, um.
Do you wanna share your screen?
Uh, I can't do it cuz I'm, my screen is in the, is in the Con- Confederation Commission.
You can just talk us through it then.
Yes, there's nothing but, but, but much.
We have, we have the material in the package with the charge.
Two packages, uh, just as an update on the projects, that uh, the fire station and the transfer station. Uh, we found a mechanism to work that we can do uh within an existing program with power options. So that we don't have to go whole formal bidding process for the larger project at the fire station. Uh, we've got a, a recent quote on the fire station, we've managed to make the, the original. Proposal was for about twenty-two kilowatts, seventy-five thousand dollars. We have a new one where we managed to get more up there. Sean has agreed to move the uh, the plumbing vents. From the south side, so we can put more panels up there, so we might have about a twenty-seven kilowatt project. Uh, and the new cost is a ten thousand dollars higher. Uh, eighty-five thousand dollars is the current cost. It's still a bit approximate, pending some issues like prevailing wage issues and things like that. Um, so we have a larger project, the, the cost per watt is actually less than we estimated before. Um, and so it's roughly within budget, the big, in terms of. We have to decide, it's complicated to do the transfer station, so we, it's unclear how that will go over time. So we might see whether uh, if there's limits on the ARPA funding, whether we just put the money into here or the extra ten thousand or so. Into here, and maybe we don't do the transfer station there, we do it under some other basis, since it's a profitable project there too. So we'll have to see how that evolves there, but um, so there's a bit of a, of a cost change there. Cuz the project is larger. Um, but what would make the project much different in that the uh. The Inflation Reduction Act has made a major improvement that should carry through. Where the investment tax credit of thirty percent is now, should be available to municipalities. Um, as a, as a one-time payment. So in, even though the project cost might go up because it's larger. We might, should be eligible for a thirty percent investment tax credit, so the project should come in significantly under budget. Seems to be some uncertainty for some reason in the implementation of this and waiting for some IRS ruling. Um, but from when I read the act and other people, that doesn't seem to be a problem there, so we should be able to come in under budget. And the project will even be more attractive. Um, so at this point now, there's still some design issues and fine-tuning of the process. But there is on the agenda for tonight, in particular, is signing a letter of intent with this company, Solec. Energy, who is a, basically the selected contractor for this power options program that we can avail ourselves of. And. We would like to set, do a letter, sign a letter of intent with them. It, it commits us to just move to the next stage where they can file the paperwork. With Eversource, um, and also get into uh some of the incentive programs that come from the state. And the sooner we do that, the sooner we might get a slightly higher incentive back. Cuz it's a declining block program as blocks get filled up with solar projects. It's, they're not, it's not a big difference uh as we get into the next block, but. The sooner that we do that, the better, plus the sooner we get them moving the Solec on the project, so that we can get it done faster. Um, the letter of intent at this point permits us to having them do all the initial filing, finish, finish up the feasibility work. And with a maximum, for some reason, everything went a little bit haywire or something changed dramatically or something else. We're only liable up to a maximum of three thousand dollars for all of their filing and permitting work that they're doing, it's um, and such. Uh, I mean, the likelihood of not proceeding is very small. Uh, and I think it would be good for us to get this project moving as fast as possible. So there's a letter of intent that has been sent by them. Uh, that uh Jeremy has had, it would be a matter of him signing it. I've suggested a couple of edits and clarifications to the letter that was sent to us. We've yet to hear back from the management. Of Solec, whether the few little edits, one I think is just a clarification of something that I think is uh not well worded. And the other is just make a reference to their, at least their initial cost estimate of about eighty-five thousand. Uh, I suggest that, I would propose that you move ahead with uh approving the letter of intent. And for Jeremy to sign it with the changes, worst comes to worst, there's some problems and tweaking that you might have your other changes to. If anybody's looked at it from, at the select board level. And we can get it approved, sign, send it back to them, if they have some, come back to us, and maybe we have to come back to the select board. Another meeting, but at least we can maybe move this thing forward at the moment. Um, but I don't know if anybody else had any. Questions or comments about the letter of intent.
I don't see any questions or any hands raised. Do I have a motion to uh authorize?
Well, I do have one que, I have one quick question, Jeff. Is the only, the only solar company that you looked at, is there, is there, is that a preferred contractor or?
Yeah, it's part of a program at this scale, so that we don't have to go through a whole competitive bid process. Their cost per watt. Uh, at first was quite high, but then after when they refined everything, it's down to around three dollars and ten cents, which is below the, the sort of current average. For prices around, so it's a, it's, it's a good solid price. The power options program is also overseeing that, overseeing the process, so that they make sure that. This, it's part of the deal that this contractor is subjected to some review through the power options project, which is a nonprofit that. Does a lot of oversight of uh municipal projects in Massachusetts. So, yeah, I feel that the prices come down enough that it's uh, that it's quite reasonable and below other ones that I've seen. When we looked around, when I've looked around at other costs, so, and it allows us to do a much easier procurement process. Than if we tried to do it some other way.
Sean has a question.
Uh, yeah, I was just, I'm not sure if Michael made this clear. He might have at the beginning, but Solec is the company that we have a very good relationship with. That has the panels at the DPW garage, so it's a, it's a different project, but we have a great working relationship with them.
That's valuable, yeah, that's great.
This will be a different kind of one. That one, they own the system and we're just buying the power from them.
Yeah.
This one is one where we're gonna own it and have a, uh, a sort of, we'd have to sign some sort of a O and M agreement over time that's fairly small. Uh, so that they oversee it, but it'll be our project in this case.
Yep. Go ahead, Paul.
I just wanna commend Michael and the Energy Committee, the, the ESC Committee, because. To me, solar power is the way to go. It's the wave of the future. It's environmentally uh responsible, it's gonna save us money, it's worth making the investment. So to me, this is no-brainer, and therefore I would uh move to uh. Authorize the town administrator to sign this letter of intent.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, Marion?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
And I am I as well. You're all set. Thank you, Michael.
Yes, thank you, everybody. Appreciate the support.
Keep us up to date if we need to do anything.
Sure, we'll know, and I'll see you later on the warrant article. Okay, everybody.
Go back to.
Yes, exactly, bye.
Next item on the agenda is the appointment of Deb Seifring as interim finance director for yet another sixty-day reportment. Hopefully we uh. We're gonna wear this option out soon, Deb. Don't give up on us here.
So I'm moved.
Second.
Marion?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
And I am I as well.
Thank you.
And glad you made it back to Massachusetts finally, Deb.
Thank you.
All right. Chief Galvin is gonna talk about police department policies.
Yes, so uh, as we've talked about before, we're uh, we've begun working towards accreditation of the department through the uh, the state uh. Uh, Police Accreditation Commission, and that's gonna require some extensive overhaul of our current policy, some adding, adding of our policies. And when the police department uh was formed, uh, the town voted in nineteen fifty-seven to accept chapter forty-one, section ninety-seven A. So that delineates the duties of the chief and responsibilities, um, and it talks specifically about um. Regulations that the department will uh, will put in place, and ultimately, those regulations need to either be approved by the board. Or um, there needs to be a thirty-day period of inaction. So we're forecasting that in the next six months or less, we're probably gonna have eighty, either edited or new policies to come before the board. And I kinda wanted just to, to discuss with you and get an idea from you what you think the best process uh for that would be. Um, you know, I think it could be kinda daunting if I'm presenting eighty different times with a. You know, I think it could be kind of daunting if I'm presenting eighty different times with eighty different policies. So just, I wanted an idea from the board on what you thought would be the best course of action to take as we move forward.
So if I could.
So go ahead, Paul.
So way back when, chief, before you were chief, We had made a commitment to the public that we would get the department accredited. And Back in those days, I was the chair of the board and Gary Hendon was police chief. And we had the same question come up. What happened was we would have the policies come in In phases, we wouldn't have eighty, we didn't have a large number of policies all at once. We did them Like three, four, five at a time. We would look at them. We were supposed to all look at them, but they, ultimately all ended up on my desk because I was the lawyer and I represent a lot of So I would review them, the board would look at them, we had a few changes. It got to the point where I would Before I, we brought it to the board, I would, I would just talk to Paul Matandi was the officer who was putting these things together in the police department. He and I would talk, he'd make some little changes. And then when It was ready, we'd bring it back to the board and have the board adopt it. So I would say since we Solved this once before that way, why don't we do the same thing now?
Well, I don't know, Paul, my, my feeling was, and I talked to Tom about this, I don't know that we need to review the policies. I don't think the select board, I certainly know I'm not qualified really to probably edit them, review them, maybe from your other towns you have experience, but I, I, I would myself, I would like to see what the select board says, I would delegate that responsibility to Tom with us getting an update on the status perhaps. And maybe overview of a kind of table of contents of all the policies that will be included, but I don't feel like I would be effective in editing any one given policy myself.
I agree with you, Jeff. I think, I think it makes sense to let the chief Go with this and then present it to us. I don't think we need to be bogged down in the details with him. He's, we hired a very qualified chief To root and you know, I, unless he wants constant feedback, I don't think, I don't think we need to be in his way.
The only thing I may add is that, you know, as he develops, so maybe allow him to have some hours of town council. I do think maybe the council should probably, should look at him because they are very experienced in You know, issues and, you know, could catch something that might be accidental.
Or can be a benchmarking thing, maybe they've drafted language for other towns and it could be a way to accelerate things also. So I don't know, do you want to weigh in, Marion? I, I hear what you're saying, Paul, but I just think that I would delegate this responsibility to Jeremy as, at a higher level, but to Tom, Tom's the expert in this. And I'm sure he's working with outside people that are helping. So I don't feel the need to review the policies in detail.
I agree with that. I, I don't either. I mean, of course, it's always open if there is a policy about which they want some
Right.
Own advice, then they're welcome to come to the select board, but other than that, I, I trust Chief Galvin and with the help of Jeremy if needed.
So Paul, do you want to find a way in which you can just give your individual feedback if you still feel like you'd like to do that?
If the board doesn't want to do it, I have other things to do, to do. Just Prepare to volunteer my time if the board was going to do it, but if they don't want to do it, that's fine.
I mean, are you comfortable with that, Tom? How do you feel about?
Yeah, I, I think what I would do is I would present them in blocks as we had five or ten, I would send them off to the board. And then, and Paul, if, if you did have time to read, you read them and when you did, even if you had input after they were put in place, The beauty of it is we can edit them and we can, you know, they're a living document, so that I would be happy to have those discussions with you moving forward as well.
Pretty what makes sense, so we don't waste a lot of public time and public meeting time is for Paul to review those, you know, with the chief. If Paul has comments on things that get presented to us, he goes, doesn't come here and spend hours on it at a public meeting, is you can get back to the chief with your comments.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, that sounds like a plan.
All right, excellent. So I, as we have the first group, I will, I will send them, send them off to you and we'll get on the agenda and we'll, we'll do them in groups and try to Some break them off in chunks and get, work through this. We're going to try and work pretty quickly, so We have some situations that allow us to do that with personnel right now and we're, we're going to take advantage of that.
Good.
Thank you very much.
All right, we're going to move on now to, I think Jeremy's going to kick this off, we're going to talk about Expanded town administrator job description and also salary survey and some other issues. Assistant town administrator job description and you want to sort of introduce us to it, Jeremy?
Sure, I'd be happy to, thank you. So I mean, it's been recognized that the duties of the town assistant town administrator have grown and, and the needs of, of the community for HR Related, human resource related expertise has grown. So this item is to consider an expanded role for the assistant town administrator To, to bring to that role, the, the role also of HR director. So we have consulted with Jennifer Thompson of Capital Strategic Solutions, she's with us tonight if you have any questions on the work that she's conducted. She's performed a salary survey and re, researched comparable communities. How they have structured this sort of position and how they deal with HR functions in relation to their assistant town administrator. She's helped to draft an updated position description. The responsibilities and scope of this position. The, it would be expanded to help the town administrator with the growing number of and complexity of human resource related matters. And to help ensure consistency in the implementation of the town's personnel administration plan. A number of similar communities have the same model. And to implement this, we'd propose to utilize the update to the town bylaw that town meeting Approved last spring, that allows the town administrator to update from time to time. Appendix A, which is a listing of positions and classification with the consent of the personnel board. With the board support, I can work with the personnel board to update appendix A, to have them review and approve a formal job description. And then once the position is included, this new upgraded position is included in the personnel administration plan, Then the town administrator could then move forward with a formal appointment in this new rule. So again, Jen Thompson of Capital Strategic Solutions is here to help give a little more context and background on this request. Jen?
Hi, good evening, everyone.
I gotta go because they're talking about it.
Diane, you have to mute yourself.
Good evening, hi, everyone. Nice to see you all. And you know, I think Jeremy did a fantastic job kind of explaining any, everything. I think the only thing I would add is that we met with town council just to go through the procedures and you know, what, what Jeremy just highlighted. Was confirmed with town council in terms of the procedures that you'd have to follow. We did go through and do a pretty comprehensive review of some comparable towns that have a similar Structure and desire to have that joint position. I don't think it's a surprise to the board, you've worked very closely with Diane, especially over the last year, when she was serving in the interim capacity. And saw firsthand that need for, you know, a direct professional with, you know, that can handle a lot of the human resources functions. It's changed so much, I would say, probably in the last decade or two. You know, the responsibilities are vast and You know, the risk of not having someone dedicated to human resources in a town with the number of employees that you have Is high, so I think it's a very strategic and smart decision that the board is recommending. So again, I think you, you've seen everything in your background package, but happy to answer any questions you might have.
So could I say something?
Sure, go ahead, Paul.
So back maybe ten years ago, The town had Department of Revenue and the Collins to take a look at our town. And A recommendation came out of that, that, that we needed to do more with the HR function. Pretty much everything that Jen just said and what's in her report was also said By Department of Revenue, I believe was the one who said it. I think Collins Center also said it. That this has been a subject that has come up numerous times in the ten years since then. The time Is really now to do it. Because as Jenna said, things have gotten more complicated With the HR function and constantly changing the roles, making more rules. Congress is doing things, Commonwealth is doing things, just to keep up with everything. And to keep it professional and well done Would lift a huge burden off the town administrator. I believe the last time we talked about this like a year ago, the expectation was the town administrator was going to do all of this. But we have so many things we want the town administrator to do. That it makes sense that, that he be responsible, but that there be somebody actually doing it on a, on a regular basis, so I, I support this concept. I noticed in the job description, there was a reference there to The HR director being the, the Public records.
Yeah, that's, that, that needs to be changed. We realized that afterwards.
Yeah, that's, I, I don't think she, or he ought to be the public record. And the people will be asking about employees, so.
Yeah, no, that's Jackie, Jackie actually has that role right now. The, the town clerk has that role, so we, there will be some additional edits to the Position description and one of our Motions will be to just move the position description to personnel board so they can, as a policy matter, review it. Jeremy can, can, can authorize it based on our town meeting vote last year, but personnel board would weigh in on the position description.
Well, I'd like the change made before Jeremy
Yes.
Codifies it, so at least we take up the public records part. Leave it with Becky.
Yeah, we discussed, we discussed that this afternoon, that was a late breaking observation that Diane and Jeremy made, so.
Okay.
That's
Great minds think alike.
Yeah, so they're, so they're good there. I have something to comment, but George raised his hand first, so why don't you go?
Thanks, Jeff. One thing I just wanted to say, I think this is well written, I think we need to look at I think Diane does a fantastic job, but we don't look at it as Diane, we need to look at it as the assistant Town administrator. I think every position that we look at in town needs to be A job description that makes sense for the town despite who's in the position. Like, and I think this does a good job of that. I think we talked about it last year, that we wanted to remove the HR function And IT function from the town administrator, and I think this is a perfect way to do it, so I fully support this.
Marion?
Yeah, I agree with what George just said. I also think that Maybe Paul can help with this. I think we need to be careful that we don't rewrite this job description in such a way that It's not considered an alteration of an existing employee's job description. But a, a new hire. I mean, i- is there anything legal, Paul, That would require us, if we put out a job description like this in somewhat, some form, that would require us to open a search? That's not our intention, obviously.
Oh, I'd have to think about that.
I just want to make sure that it's done in such a way that we accomplish what we're hoping to accomplish and, you know, don't get into some Legal quagmire that we don't want to be in.
It's a good question. As Jen said, we reviewed this extensively with Chris Petrini's firm, so we can ask them also.
We already have a town administrator, this, and we're essentially, we're taking assistant town administrator and essentially we're taking An existing position And adding duties to that existing position. If that, you don't need to do a search. So I did not read the document from that perspective, but in my recollection of having read it, that It does not Create a new position. It And therefore no search needs to be done for the new position. It's, it's simply as modifying An existing employee's job description.
Right, so is this a job description that Jen put together? Jen, I should ask you this. Was this based on the assistant TA's existing job description? Or was it a question?
Yes.
Yes, that's absolutely correct, Marion. So we took the existing description. And then any additional duties that Diane was performing that weren't reflected in the, you know, currently performing that weren't reflected in the existing description. And then we looked at the comparable communities that had the dual function and we added in some of those HR functions.
Okay.
Eric?
Sorry. Yeah, so I basically just wanted to address, I guess, two things that have been said. And one is just, this is Mary Anne's, because we actually did talk about those at council, I spoke some about council on this. And one, we have existing, just like I said, job description, assistant town administrator, but town meeting also authorized a stipend for HR director. So there was an intent that actually would, that actually would exist and be tacked on to it, to it. Here we are, simply, just simply Doing the intent of town meeting and best pre-designating that person, so it's already up to essentially a subjective nature, whether that be essentially tacked on to anyway. And I think the salary survey is well within like us and the personnel board's ability to do that is to adjust things according to market rate, so I think there's no concern there. And something that George said before, this always was intended not to be targeted to an individual person, but always overall. Because speaking selfishly, I'll tell you that You know, when Diane does eventually move on and win, I think, Mega Millions in three days, Then at that point, we will not be able to compete at like whatever was making like seventy thousand dollars or whatever before. And this will actually make us competitive to actually, you know, get a good qualified person in this position. I think we've been lucky and frankly underpaying for this position for a decade.
So that kind of gets to my point. What I did is, you saw the salary survey, which was in the handout, it, it's about a dozen towns. What I did is I took, and some of them have an actual salary and some of them have a range. So I took the six towns, Dover, Hollison, Westboro, Millis, Stowe and Medway, Where they have a combined assistant town administrator and HR director, so it's the same position. And I averaged the low end, the midpoint and the top end of the ranges, so if we want to Do, do you feel like we should choose a salary tonight for this position?
No.
You don't think we should?
No, I think, I think first you want to establish the job.
Okay.
That's too much like, like contract negotiations with a specific person. I think you wanted to find the job, put in the job, the number you've just gotten to is what the salary range is. You, you can either put that in the job description or leave that out, but at this point Let's create the job.
Okay.
Get it approved.
So we'll have the personnel board review, because we have a draft job description, we'll make the change you suggested. And have personnel review it, is that what you're proposing would be the next step?
Yes.
And then what would happen then? Personnel would send it back to us to Make, it won't be a contracted job, it'll just be a job offer, right?
Yes.
And so we'll, we'll choose a salary offer at that point?
Yes.
That's fine.
I mean, it's conceivable that it'll be turned down and we may have to Do something else, but
Okay.
It's just a cleaner process than
That's fine with me. So Jeremy, you can follow up with Vicky and Personnel Board to Make the change that we talked about and then any other input that they have.
Will do. And, and as part of that, in the personal administration plan, there are actually categories of positions. And the information that Jen has gathered by way of the, those data points from other communities and comparables Will help us place it within one of those classifications, which will guide the eventual salary of this position.
What did town meeting vote for a stipend for this position?
In the budget?
Well, we voted just to have a, a, a sort of a separate HR support, I, I think it was ten thousand dollars, I believe.
Correct.
But it was really, it wasn't an integrated position, it was just At the time, you know, having the town administrator be able to get an outside resource of some sort, I think.
I thought it was in the salary line, I thought it was a stipend in the salary line.
I can't remember, I may be wrong.
Remember either.
Yeah.
I think we'll have to look through the budget. I think we'll have to look through the budget and I think that's determined down the road after like Paul said, if the position established, we work with the Personnel Board and establish where where the salary range is and go from there.
Yes, I think intent was to make it internal. I just want to make that clear. The intent was not to make it an external. So I'm almost sure a salary line. Okay.
Yeah. Okay. So we're good to go and you'll just let us know and then you put on the agenda when Personnel has reviewed it.
Well, can I make a motion to?
Go ahead, Paul.
To give preliminary approval to the job description as amended and refer to the Personnel Board to take further action.
Perfect. Is there a second?
A second.
Marian.
I.
George.
Hi.
Paul.
Hi.
Eric.
I.
And I am I as well. Thanks, Jeremy and Jen. And now you can go back to listening, Diane. Thanks, everyone. The next agenda item is annual town meeting. And in the packet, we I don't know if we need to review the meeting timetable. The only thing that changed, I think you already know this advisory moved the public hearing up by a week. I think it's I forget what it is now, like March 18th. Now, is that what it is? I forget.
Yeah, that's what I have in the calendar.
What they put. So they moved it one week earlier, but it's earlier than what they'd said before, but it's actually closer to what it had traditionally been, I think. So that's the only change I noticed.
So on the issue of January 14th, are you envisioning the five of us at town hall and people?
I sort of made a I sort of made an arbitrary chairman's decision today to make it be hybrid so that we can whoever wants to be at town hall can be at town hall in person and whoever wants to come in through the hybrid technology and Zoom will be able to do that. And Diane and I are going to meet with Klaus and dry run it again next week. But we have to clean that. They just built that new wall, you know, it looks pretty cool. Actually, they have a new wall in in the select board meeting room also that got installed. So I envisioned it being a hybrid meeting for several reasons. One, there are people who have COVID or afraid of getting COVID. So I think we need to be sensitive to that. But it also lets the budget makers not sit there for an hour and 40 minutes waiting for their budget to come up. You know, you don't always know how long it's going to take. So they can dial in and just participate when they need to. So I I think, you know, you could overrule my decision, but I think a hybrid meeting, I plan to be there in person and I you know, leave it up to everyone who wants to be there. But I think a hybrid option would be best.
I agree with you, Jeff. I'm going to be I'll be there in person, but I think hybrid makes sense.
See anyone that disagrees or wants to?
I love the idea. The only thing, the only thing I don't like about it is this means that I fully become the only chair never to have done a live meeting.
And what we also.
For the second year was just get one live meeting and I just couldn't last.
Then Deb was saying what we're going to do, we're going to to make it efficient. She's going to bring up all the budgets, each budget. So we won't have like individual people trying to then pull their budget up. We'll have she'll have all the latest versions of the budget for us to put on the screen when each topic comes up. Did you want to say anything else, Deb?
No, no, I talked to Klaus about that and he thought it would be best if I was just in my office. And then, you know, did it kind of remotely, although I'll be in my office.
Yeah, that's fine with us. And sometimes the wifi in the room is, I think he's changed. We've got a new router in the room or drop point in the room now, I believe also.
So.
Any anybody have anything else? We we set the start time at 8:30. So anybody have any other comments on that?
Just we talked about, is this just for the who are the budget makers that are going to be there? Because I know we talked about, I think it was Jeremy talked about, like, do we really need some of these smaller budgets that are within guidance coming before us?
I know. I wonder that myself. Originally, I thought it was going to be all, but it happens because of their scheduling this week. I dialed into Advisory Committee Tuesday night and every single budget maker was under budget, you know? So there was actually no, no changes, no, I mean, they were well managed departments, but also there weren't a lot of changes. So.
I mean, when you look at this next page in our has advisories proposed discussion schedule, they, I mean, if we were looking at all our budgets, half of them are on January 11th.
Yeah.
Before we meet on Saturday, which we talked about before that we should be seeing the budgets before advisor. I mean, those are a lot of our smaller ones, but at the same time, again, it's why is advisory seeing them before us?
Yeah, I don't know that they in the past have always sort of had their own schedule. I think we definitely want to focus on, you know, DPW Police and Fire. One question I had for you is, you know, because it's a contract here for the schools. I don't know. The schools are planning to present also, I think.
Well, we don't, I mean, to to advisory, yeah, we don't have any say over the school budgets.
Well, they have the we don't per se, but they have they have some capital projects they're considering. I think I can't think of her name now. What's the woman's name? That's Dawn. I think they're planning to come that Saturday.
Okay. I mean, typically, I thought it was just the people that report to the select board because we're that's the only ones we have any per se over.
I know.
Say on what the school does with their budget. It really is between the schools and advisory, not us.
And I think to your point, Stephen Si and Dan are are both sickle or both planning to attend the session also. So they'll be there.
It's always good knowledge to have these other budgets. We don't ever vote on them, but it's good to know. I mean, like I said, I see the big picture anyway. But and the schools, I mean, when it comes to the contract negotiations, that's going to be well past the budget. We just started.
Yeah, I know. I know. You said that. I realize that. And they used to.
That's, I mean, irrelevant at this point because we barely even started.
But it probably be useful to at least know the cap of the capital ones. Maybe.
That's something. She could at least present the capital that day.
Yeah. Again, in the sense, they might have something big, like maybe they're bringing back one of the roof projects this year or something.
They did the middle school last year, so and like common. So it might be the high school this year.
Yeah.
It'd be next year. Actually, it might be next year. I can't remember.
So.
And everybody that there is going to be an municipal agreement that needs to be signed that would allow us to pay for capital projects differently.
Yeah.
Than what's provided for in the regional agreement. That only can be approved by the board of select. So it has to be. We have to know something about what we're getting involved in.
Yes.
It's not like we have no, no.
I'm talking about the operating budget.
Yeah.
Clearly talking about the operating budget, the capital items, of course, we always vote on those. So.
Yeah. So I believe that we can confirm, but I believe that Dawn's planning to be there.
Okay.
So I think I think it will be helpful. I missed the last one because I was in Amsterdam when you did this three years ago or whenever, two years ago, whatever, 2020, whatever. All right. Then then we have, I think we've reviewed this already. The third bullet item under that item nine was the omnibus guy is basically the advisory guidance memo. We already reviewed that, I think, and it shows what their recommendation was in the four and a half percent cola allowance and I don't think there's any need to review that. So shall we move on to the warrant articles? We got a new list from Genie today. Last minute with George's fist help adding the 350th anniversary as a warrant article. So the only ones that were mentioned here was the assessor articles. You want to go through the whole list? There's some 23 some odd or you want to just review?
Maybe just go through the ones that we have on the agenda since they're on the agenda and then we can just kind of run through the list and say, you know.
Yeah. So the first one is the assessors, which I think the only issue there is it was brought up by Nancy. She's here tonight. And I think it's just a question of whether it's sponsored by the select board or whether it's a citizen's petition that Nancy sponsors. Is that correct? Am I stating that correct, Nancy?
Well, yes, but I would like to clarify a few things that were raised at the last meeting.
Okay.
Would allow. This article is fulfilling a promise made at the last town meeting to bring an article to this town meeting to provide for a Sherwin resident on the board of assessors. It's not a critique of past or present personnel, process or policy. I'm delighted that things are going well and would expect no less. I'm grateful that Drew agreed to stay on to represent us and to allow time to bring this before the voters to come to this agreement. He had already spoken with Paul, so I didn't feel compelled to interview him. I suggest that he will listen to debate and vote his conscience. This does not change the vote to a point that passed at last town meeting. We will never know how much this promise influenced that vote. But all three members will still be appointed. This will encourage and allow the select board to give special consideration to a resident. So we have representation, which they cannot do without a bylaw. The Board of Assessors is an important board whose actions affect us all. And yes, like most government jobs, it is tightly controlled by law. But we should have a voice at the table as these laws are applied. I appreciate that at the last meeting Eric brought up an issue with the word qualified in the presented article. I would ask that you remove that word as I have done in my draft petition. I believe the appointing authority should determine what is needed at the time of the hire. From the professionals, I would hope they would look for certifications and some expertise in the field. Whereas for the resident, more willingness to serve and a commitment to do the required training, attend meetings, bring a residence voice to the table and to the oversight of the various processes, which is what was expected of someone taking the position by election. And finally, Paul very kindly did not want the burden of collecting signatures to be placed on me. But that's not my priority. I want your support, even if you're not sponsoring it. So I tested the waters over the holidays to see if it is worthy of that ask. As of this point in time, I have already collected over 50 signatures with comments like this makes a lot of sense. I hope it makes sense to you as well.
Is there a select board discussion that you'd like to have? Go ahead, Eric.
I I I agree with this in concept. I do. I, you know, if you have three members, we went from three elected to three potentially out of town was appointed. We kind of swung the pendulum pretty far there. And to have one member that, you know, should be a resident and kind of a bailout if can't find it, I like it. I still have some issues with some wording. And what I would like to do is maybe work with the the advocate as well as town council and bring something kind of more tweaked back at the next meeting. I can go on about what it is, but maybe something that I think the board would you know, would be able to get to get behind. In parallel, Nancy can actually move forward with citizens petition as well and withdraw it if the board can't go for it, can't you know, get behind something else. That's the kind of a thought that I have.
I can. Can I add something?
George, George has had his hand up first.
Yep. Um, I would just say I can, I I tend to lean towards, yes, put something on the warrant. I don't necessarily support the article, but I think it's only fair to as Eric said, if language is worked in that we give the citizens a chance to vote on it. That's that's fair. Like I said, I'm not sure if I support it like as a voter, but I but I think we should probably put it on the warrant.
Go ahead, Paul.
So if Nancy submits her petition with the 50 signatures on it to withdraw it, she has to get the consent of all the 50 people who signed it. It would be much better for us to have an agreed upon article that can be modified, the town council can make changes to rather than have her casted in concrete the way the citizen petition is because it has to go on the warrant as as it's been signed by all these voters. That's why I originally suggested that we put an article on the warrant. I think she would be happy to have it tweaked and I think town council should tweak it. I like Eric's idea of offering to work on it. I think that's very helpful. So I would like to figure out a way that Nancy can kind of hold her petition and not file it for at least an opportunity for us to see if we can come up with something that works for her and works for the citizens of the town and works for us. For all in agreement. Let's go with the better language that puts something on the warrant that.
Well, I don't know when we can always, because we could extend the warrant date if we needed to. I personally am not comfortable having it be sponsored by the select board. And the reason why is because I feel like we asked the voters last year. Did they want to make it all appointed? And they said, yes. So I would not, I would vote against having it be sponsored by the select board. I understand your sensitivity to the language, Paul, but you know, she can go back to the 50 people if we actually have to. It sounded like you haven't actually had them sign something yet, if I understood what you said correctly, Nancy, that you have their.
I have this. No, I have the signatures. I have over 50 signatures. I have not submitted it to the town clerk because I wanted the opportunity for you to decide whether you would sponsor it. And I and I don't want you to sponsor it unless you embrace it because that's a waste of both of our time.
Well, I think the biggest decision and how it gets approved is what, you know, how it goes to advisory public hearing. If advisory votes favorable action, that's really pretty determining figure. But I actually am in favor of the motion, but I'm not in favor of the select board sponsoring it. That sounds contradictory, but I I think it should be a citizen's petition, but I would probably vote for it myself personally.
I mean, that's why I was kind of recommending apparel pass. And I think Nancy could probably move forward with the minimum signatures. If you get 50, you can get what you need, like 510 or something like that.
You only need 10. Well, well, I'm wondering if if we can go forward with the with the citizen petition and then amend the language on the floor.
You can do that.
Yeah, I'm just a little worried. Like, I don't, I like the peril idea. I'm a little worried. This board may not vote for it. Just again, this hearing what I'm hearing now. And I may add, like, you know, other citizen petitions have been withdrawn without everyone voting for it. I don't think Rockwood. I think just the one guy did it, you know, I mean, last year. So I mean, it's happened before. I may, I may want an opinion from council on that. We actually need every single signatory to actually withdraw it. And I know we've done that before.
I'm happy to do whatever's legal.
All right. So I'm still going to offer myself up to work with Nancy and to come up with something, you know, for this board in two weeks. Not sure that I'll guarantee the select board sponsorship, but it might also help you somehow with better language to go before advisory.
And I'd be happy to include it as an amendment if we have to submit it as a citizen's petition. And it sounds like, well, it's up to you all to decide that, but it sounds like Jeff really does not want the board to be the sponsors of this. Although I want to remind you, Jeff, that we voted to make it appointed and we're not changing that at all. It's still going to be appointed. That and town meeting did did vote for appointed positions.
Yeah.
Though this isn't changing that. And and as I said before, we made quite a case of the fact that we would come back with amendments. So I don't know whether that affected that vote or not, but I suspect it did make someone because we were sensitive to the fact that it's hard to find volunteers, which is very sad. But I could get on my soapbox about that. No, I won't.
No, I think I think we understand. Marion, you've had your hand up for a while.
Yeah, just to comment, I like Eric's solution. And I think it's important that the the language be good, even if that requires going back to the citizens, getting, you know, withdrawing signatures or getting new ones or whatever. Because you don't want to try to amend it on the floor of town meeting.
That's now we've done that with the planning board before. That didn't go well. I remember that.
Yeah, I got burned.
We've been there. But the problem is we're closing the warrant, I believe, on January 10th. So without before our next meeting.
That doesn't mean that the language. Well, if it's a citizen petition, you're right, the language has to be final by then. So Nancy, on the parallel path idea, I think it's important that you work with Erica, who town council, get the language just right. And then get those signatures and then you're good to go.
Um, well, it only takes, it only takes 10 signatures. So if I were to submit this to give us a place. Well, I can't submit it. I can't submit it after you close the warrant anyway. So we're kind of in a pickle here.
Yeah.
Why don't you submit on 10 signatures? Just use 10 of the 50 somewhere that you have instead of 50.
Let's cut the page.
I know all of these people and in my my request to sign this, I did. I know all of these people and in my, my request to sign this, I did say that if the selectmen were going to, um. Were going to, uh, sponsor it. That I would not be putting the petition in. So I, I'm comfortable putting the petition in. And if I have to go back to these people, they all are Sherburne residents. They're all our friends and neighbors. So. You tell me. I, I can do that because I would like if it goes as a, as a citizen's petition, I would like it to say Nancy Hessen, forty-nine other people or fifty other people, whatever we have here. So. To show that there is, there is support for it in the town. So. If Eric's willing to work with me, I would be happy to do that. And I will go through the agony of an amendment on the town meeting floor if it doesn't work out to be something that you, you want to put in. Uh, differently. But I don't want to miss the deadline.
I mean, I, I, I recommend moving forward like ten or eleven. I mean, you might do an extra like eleventh just in case something comes up. If George Santos is one of the signatureers in this, you know, we'll do there.
But you have to go to Brazil. Yeah.
But you know, I would at least, I'll, I'll do something that that's my recommendation because if you do need all of them to show up to whatever, you know, it's nice to get fifty. It shows you have huge support behind it, but it's nice to get ten if you have to bail out.
Um, well, I. I hate to do that when people went to the trouble of signing it and, and a lot of them had conversations and so forth. So. I would rather take the responsibility if we come up with something that gives me time to do that. To withdraw, but I, I won't be able to withdraw unless you're putting something in. So we're still up against the ten, the tenth deadline.
On any event. I've seen much dismay to amend on the floor. And if they're simple and clear, like taking out the word qualified. The, they, they pass easily. The confusion arises when you say it's, you know, strike everything that was before and you come in with six more pages of detail. That's where you get into trouble. But if, if you work with the existing language and you tweak it, that's what we're looking at. An amendment on the floor. Is perfectly in order. You don't need to withdraw anything.
Well, I, I guess, but today's only the fifth. So Eric. It would seem like you could. You could get it, Chris Petrini to look at it between now and Tuesday.
Well, you have, the, 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 um.
Chris has already looked at it.
Council has already.
He already advised it. He already revised it. We have a nice short cons. We have the, it. Already in place. If there's a word that has to be changed, they're fine, but.
Well, I have, on my petition, I have already taken out the word qualified. So I would be willing to do that if, if you wanted to sponsor it. I think the thing is whether or not the select board wants to be involved with the sponsorship.
I honestly, my issue is qualified. I actually like qualified. I wanted to define qualified. And that, that was if it was my issue. It really was. Because one of the selling points of having this point one is that you get people who could screen qualifications and so on and so forth like that. The word qualified is still in this, in the draft we had before us in the second sentence, taken out of the first sentence. That's some of the things. I actually want to actually state has to have whatever training within so many months. I wanted to be some specified there because that was the selling point of the point. When it came last year, they said, we can get people have blah, blah, blah certifications and so on and so forth. I want to mandate that they actually get that within a certain amount of time. That's some of the stuff I was, I was concerned about and I kind of wanted to work, work with this language.
So another thing that wasn't pointed out at the last meeting is. The, the course it has to be taken is now put online so that they don't have to go someplace for a class and all that. So it's easier and it's an open book. Uh, test. So that should not turn people off like having to. Take a day off from work or whatever to, um, so. I, I would love to work with you, Eric, but I, I think we need to. We need to be sure we don't miss this deadline.
So that's why I would suggest that we put it on the warrant, at least as a placeholder. For the time being.
And we don't need the language, we don't need this specific language to do that?
No, we've got language. You can put it on as a placeholder, but Eric can work to change it. And work with, with Nancy. Rather than have us locked into specific language right now. So if we agree to, to put something on the warrant. And we can put it, we say, you can always say board of selectmen for. A, a, a set, for citizens. Something like that. If you don't want to make it, you, if you want to make it clear that the selectmen are doing it as a courtesy to. To residents and not as, as, uh, committed to anything.
I'm not completely following what you said, but I think I'd like to hear what Jackie has to say because she'll probably make it better, more understandable or have good ideas.
Um, thank you. So. My understanding was, is that the language on the citizen's petition is what exactly has to go. In front of. Uh, town meeting. So if the, if the citizen's petition is submitted to me by five o'clock on Tuesday. And I certify at least ten of those signatures. That is, that language and that citizen's petition is what by law has to go on, on, on the warrant. So. I don't think that you can change the language. Submit it. On the tenth.
That was going to be my question.
Yeah, you can't change the language. It has to go exactly as it's written, has to go on into the, uh, into, onto the warrant.
It was the signatures that I've collected, right? You're, you're saying that the, the signatures that I've collected go with specific language and that's the way it must go.
Yes. So if it is submitted by, by the warrant, so unless the select board decides to extend the warrant. To give more time to change the language and get new signatures. Um, my understanding is, is that if Nancy submits it as written. On Tuesday, that that's what has to go in. And then you'll have to change. The language on the floor.
Well, that's why I'm suggesting that the select board put on an article on. Right now in the form that, that she's asking for. With the understanding that Eric is going to work on it. And that gives us time. Whatever town council, Eric and Nancy agree upon will be what gets printed in the warrant for the voters. Rather than being stuck with. The language that's currently in the petition that's already been signed by fifty some other people.
Okay. So you're saying that it would be a select board.
Yes.
Sponsored article.
Yes.
Okay. I think that's the best solution too. I agree with that. You know, it can be select board for. Uh, you know, interested citizens or whatever you want to call your group. Uh, but, uh, that just allows us to get better language on the warrant.
And Jeff, as you said, as you questioned, we, we don't have to have exact language before the warrant closes for our sponsored.
No, no, I get the issue.
Warrant because we do, we do placeholders all the time. That's.
No, no, I understand what the issue here. I just, uh, we can take a vote, but it seems like that's the. The direction. I can't, I, I would not vote to have it be select board sponsored, but. From what I'm hearing, the other four would. Is that, shall we just take a motion of? Have it be, you're moving that it be supported, sponsored by the select board. Is that right?
Not supported. That's a different discussion.
I'm sorry, sponsored, sponsored event.
Sponsored to be put on the warrant.
So.
I have another question. Okay. Maybe I'll ask a question after we take this vote.
Yeah. So is there a second for Paul's motion?
I second.
All right. So Marion.
I.
George.
I vote to support putting, not, I vote to.
Sponsor it.
The warrant, not that I support the article.
Yes.
So.
Paul.
Hi.
Eric.
Hi.
And I, Monet.
And then I have a, um, kind of a, a administrative question. So is it possible to reopen the last agenda, item agenda, item number, number nine. On the annual telling timeline and extend the warrant closing from January tenth to like. January twelfth or something.
When's our next meeting?
That's what I was wondering. That's a, that's what I was exactly thinking, uh, George.
Can we, can we?
We meet whatever fourteen days from five. I think it's the nineteenth of, uh, January.
Yeah.
So why don't I make it the twentieth?
Is that okay, Jackie? Do we have, was that time? Do we have any time deadlines that?
No.
The warrant up?
No, no.
I'm just looking for a few days to help.
It's completely up to you about the warrant. It's fine.
I'm just looking for a few days help Nancy. I don't need a week, whatever it is, you know what I mean?
I would do it till, I would, I'm, I'm going to make a motion to extend the warrant till January twentieth. So it gives us time at our next meeting.
I second.
Okay, do, uh, before we vote, do we need to cancel the last vote that we just voted on? Okay. So, all right. So, uh. Uh, before we vote, Marion, I mean, uh, whatever your name is, Nancy has her hand up. Do you want to comment before we vote?
No, I, I just. Had a question that if you, if you promised to, to sponsor it, if that's what this turns out to be. Am I at risk that? You're going to decide not to and it's going to be too late to put the citizen's petition in or is it a concrete thing once you vote it?
I think we've already voted to. We've already voted to sponsor, put it on the warrant.
But.
Okay. So, so I.
I thought you were, I, I'm confused now. I thought we were going to maybe extend the warrant date so we didn't have to sponsor it.
No, no, we've already sponsored it, but it's a good idea. To, to, uh. Extend, I think both. We should do both.
There is some risk because we kind of voted in concept. I haven't seen the language yet. What if we come up with, you still don't like the language? And that, that is a risk.
Oh, but that's different than, we can still vote against the article as a group even, but we, we're not voting on the article. We're voting on whether we want it on the warrant.
I mean, I think it should be on the warrant.
I, I actually thought you were changing our vote. I thought we could leave it as a citizen's petition if we extend the warrant. To the twentieth. So you would have time to get the language straightened out with the town council and then wouldn't have to submit it on Tuesday.
I just, I just think it's more efficient to sort out the language now than have fifteen amendments on the town meeting floor and extend.
No, I agree with that wholeheartedly, but if we extend the warrant to the twentieth, it could be a citizen's petition by then. Unless you definitely want it to be sponsored by the select board. I, I'm going to leave it up to you guys because I, I don't, I don't, I'm a minority view here, I think. So I think whatever the select board wants to do.
We already voted on it.
Okay. So why do we want to extend the warrant?
Eric.
Because we can always modify the language if it's.
I just felt there was some risk that the board still, still might not sponsor this. If the board, you think is going to sponsor it no matter what, then.
We already, we just voted on it. We are sponsoring.
Yeah.
Not necessarily supporting it, but we're sponsoring it.
Sponsor it. There you go. Sponsor it.
We already voted on that.
Just because the language is not confirmed, so to me.
I'm going to withdraw my motion to extend the warrant. I'm withdrawing my motion to extend.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. I think we're in violent agreement. This is good. No, I think it's fine. So, so it'll be, uh, sponsored by the select board. And the language, Eric, you'll still work with, uh, Chris Petrini and Nancy to get the language straightened out.
So we'll leave the word qualified in as it was submitted to you. Is that what we're saying?
I'll work with you.
You can work offline on that.
I wanted to find, I wanted to find, I actually want to state to have to have certifications by some, by six months and stuff like that. And we can, we can go over it.
All right. But did we, hang on, Michael, Jackie, did we answer your questions? Or make you uncomfortable or anything else?
No. So, um. I was planning on being at the office until five o'clock on Tuesday to make sure that I accepted. I don't know if there's any other citizens' petitions coming in. So. I will still plan on being at the office until five to clock those in, but. We are assuming that Nancy is not submitting the citizen's petition at this point.
That's what, that's what it sounds like. Yep.
Okay.
I haven't heard of any other words. Has anybody else?
I haven't either, but I, I still have to be there, but I just wanted to make sure I understood.
Okay.
Thank you.
And so Michael, are you, Michael, are you commenting on the next one or you're commenting on this one?
On this one. I was gonna, you might not like this comment, but Nancy, I would almost say that. In case you don't like what happens with the sponsored one that you might still want to put in your, do the parallel track. And you could always pull it out at the end, but, uh, you might not like how things evolve. If I was in your shoes. I might just still do my citizen's petition and just withdraw it if the, uh, the select board one works. And goes to your satisfaction. Uh, and so as a, as a fallback, it seems like the parallel track might be. But whatever, you could decide on that one yourself. But I'll leave it at that.
That's why I wanted to do both. Extend and sponsor, but it's done.
Can we move on to the next one?
Yes.
Thank you.
So the next one is the, um. What is the next one? The possibility of combining the treasurer and collector.
No, no, the next one's specialized stretch energy code.
I skipped one?
Yep.
Yeah, you're right. Is that what you're, Brad had his, Brad.
I think that's Brad and Gino.
Brad or, I'm not sure who's presenting that one, the energy stress code.
I'm, I'm presenting it, but I didn't know if Michael or Gino wanted to, you know, briefly introduce the, uh, the warrant.
They're both here.
Michael, why don't you, why don't you go ahead?
Michael disappeared, maybe. I don't know.
He's here.
I'm here. Uh, coming and going, uh. We had a record short con con meeting, um. The, uh. No, I don't know if I need to introduce it. I guess other than the fact that right now I think the background slide sort of covers it. I don't want to.
Yeah.
Want to just take it. I'll chime in at the end. There's some other points to be made.
Okay, sounds good. I'm going to, um, I'm going to share my screen. And this, this presentation shouldn't be much longer than, you know, five to seven minutes. It's just about five slides. All right. Still on Windows seven, sad. Okay. Does everyone see that? Okay.
Yep.
Okay, great. Um, all right. So. This is a proposal, um, to adopt, uh, the higher efficiency specialized building code. Um, as a, and this is a, a proposed warrant article. And we'll be emphasizing, um, passive house, uh, construction and all electric construction. And just a little bit of background, passive house is a, um. Energy efficient construction standard that is a main, albeit not absolutely necessary pathway to satisfy this higher building code. And this is, um, being brought forth by the Energy and Sustainability Committee or the ESC. All right. So just some background, um, Sherborne's an opt-in stretch code adopter as of twenty eleven. Um, this was part of becoming a green community. Uh, and becoming a green community was done via town meeting vote, and that's enabled us, um, to get some grants, uh, for, uh, town building energy improvements. And so what is in place now for our building code, um, was actually just recently updated. Uh, we are using a newly updated stretch code as of January first, twenty twenty-three. And that is, um, uh, based on the International Energy Conservation Code of twenty twenty-one. Plus some Massachusetts amendments. Uh, previously it was the twenty eighteen. IECC, uh, plus amendments. And there's going to be some forthcoming, um, additional amendments, um, in July twenty twenty-four. That's going to further increase the stringency of this building standard. And so for this warrant article, this proposed warrant article, um, we're moving to adopt this specialized code as of January first, twenty twenty-four. Which is essentially going to be the forthcoming, um, stretch code that will be implemented in July twenty twenty-four, plus some additional regulations. Uh, that define this specialized code in the, uh, regulation appendices. So that'll need to be adopted by town vote, of course. All right. So, um, what are the benefits of this specialized code? Well, it's going to accelerate reductions in energy use and, uh, carbon emissions, which is an important part of meeting the Massachusetts. Twenty thirty emissions reduction, uh, goals. And actually the specialized code is even consistent with the twenty fifty net zero goal vision. So really, you know, you can probably expect this to eventually be adopted anyways in the, uh, at some point in the future. And then also, uh, it will save money, uh, for the homeowners, uh, based on. Expected utility cost savings, um, which will be greater than, um, the additional upfront costs of implementing this standard. Over and above the, you know, what our baseline, um, code is, which is the stretch code. Um. And this results in a lower lifecycle cost. And this has been seen in the field. Um, so we expect this, uh, to, to hold, generally speaking. And, uh. Again, going back to this kind of passive house, um, construction standard. There's been quite a bit of reports that have shown that it does achieve a positive ROI fairly quickly. This is based on field data and this is accelerating as builders become more comfortable with this building standard. And we also think a benefit of adopting the specialized code, um, is that sure. And we also think a benefit of adopting the specialized code is that Sherborne will join other towns in taking a lead role in combating climate change. And of course, the more towns that, that do adopt this, we build momentum, you know, and, and. It'll further lower the cost of implementing this building standard, which is already coming down quite a bit. And Arlington, Stowe and Wellesley, we know are pursuing this. So for some more reasons to adopt the specialized code. The, the differences between the specialized code and the stretch code are becoming industry standards. You know, going back to that passive house concept again. There, it's becoming quite popular, and there's a lot of, of rebates via Mass Save in Massachusetts. And then just to show that, you know, increasing popularity in twenty eighteen, there were twenty certified passive house projects. And as of twenty twenty-two, there were over ten thousand. And that other aspect that we wanted to stress, the all-electric pathway. You know, we feel is the, the new, the new goal, so that houses can become renewable energy based as the grid continues to move towards. You know, renewable sources such as solar and wind. And these, these, you know, we strongly expect will happen within the lifetime of the building. And I'm sure a lot of us right now, honestly, we, we're probably sad that, you know, going back to that passive house concept and just energy efficient. Buildings, we're, we're probably a little sad that our own homes weren't much more energy efficient as, you know, energy costs have gone up. And, you know, it's also a comfort thing, too. These, these buildings are incredibly comfortable. And, you know, further evidence towards this happening out there in the field in Massachusetts. The Mark Developments Northland Newton Development, which is currently under construction, includes seven hundred and fifty-eight passive house units. And they will be fully electric. So just generally, you know, passive house and other energy efficiency measures will lessen energy use. And which, of course, you know, reduces consumption of, of electricity and fuels, makes it easier on the grid and, and, you know, less fossil fuels. Even if, you know, the passive house is, is powered by fossil fuels. And then, of course, for large building projects such as, you know, large multifamilies. These, you know, using a higher energy efficiency standard will be that much more impactful. And again, it's going to decrease the lifecycle cost when you factor in, you know, both the upfront costs with the energy savings. So, you know, in conclusion, you know, why go the extra mile to adopt this? Well, the lifecycle cost of, of the home is, is going to be reduced with a more stringent building, building code. Again, as we've seen in the field. You know, the, the, you know, going back to that passive house concept again, the incremental costs, they keep coming down. And now, you know, and, and there's, there's been some empirical data that has shown it's, you know, one percent or zero percent or even negative. As builders become very comfortable with this concept relative to existing standards. And this building standard, you know, is, is a very well researched building standard with a lot of field data. And it, it requires pre-build and post-build certification. So there's a lot of oversight. So you can be, you know, both as a builder and a, and a homeowner, you can feel confident that it's going to be implemented properly. There are other ways to, to meet these standards, and even with the updated stretch code, which, you know, by July twenty twenty-four is going to be quite stringent. There's still gonna be a lot of freedom for builders, which, you know, is, is, is a good and a bad thing. But here we have a model where, you know, there's, there's standardized software. And, you know, there's, there's a lot of confidence that the proposal will perform as expected. And then compared to conventional all-electric scenarios, you know, having highly energy efficient homes is going to reduce the burden on the grid. And. And then it's, it's just going to, that's going to be increasingly important as the electrification of our society increases. And of course, it's, it's going to, it's a lower carbon standard that will, like I said before, it's likely to be implemented anyways. As we've seen through the years, as the stretch code, as all building codes continue to get more stringent. And finally, you know, circling back to it, this aligns with the twenty fifty net zero emissions goals. So final words are, you know, please remember, we did pass the climate emergency declaration warrant article last year. So it is time to take action, given that community commitment, and then quoting a local passive house builder. You know, we know how to build net zero buildings for little or no premium, no extra cost, more comfortable, less energy cost, no operational carbon. Plus, your kids think they're cool, so why wouldn't you want to build one? And then attacking the operational carbon in new buildings is important, but easy and a no-brainer. So that's it. Thank you so much.
There's a draft, there's a draft from the D O E R at the state level. There's a draft. I guess, what is it called? That we just got, Gino, what, what there, I don't know whether we sent it into you. That, there's a draft chapter that would be added for, that outlines what the specialized energy code is as it's been promulgated.
It's a model, it's a model draft, just like when the stretch code was adopted in twenty eleven. The, the state provided a model of how to adopt it. And so we have that, that same thing. It would essentially replace chapter twenty-six of the general bylaws. Which is the stretch code with the. With the newer version.
Yeah, I don't know if you could see this now. I just quickly put it up here that there is already standardized language. That's come down with the state. That we don't have to go through this now, but I just want to let you know that it's there.
So, Jeff. Well, actually, George had his hand up first, I think.
Okay.
George, you.
I'll have to stand up first. Go ahead, Paul.
Oh, all right. Whichever one of you wants to go is fine.
So I was gonna say that tonight's discussion is only about whether or not we put something on the warrant, not whether it's to be supported. And therefore, I would move to put this on the warrant. I would say to the sponsors that a copy of this, this new code should be available somewhere. So that people connect, voters can actually see what it is that they're, they're voting on, not just a summary. So it might be good to put it on a, a link on town's website. That would cross-reference it, but in the meantime, the motion is to put this on the warrant.
Yes.
Well, the war, just to clarify what you said, but it's, it's the sponsor is the energy and sustainability coordinator, is that correct? Committee.
The sustainability coordinator.
There's only two ways that Art can get on the warrant. One is board of select, and the other is citizens.
This, you have to sponsor it for us.
Yes, so we're putting it on for the energies or sustainability coordinator or whoever they.
Okay, well, then I will, we'll have to take that vote in a few minutes, but I, let's hear what George has to say.
This, this article, to be frank, scares me. We are already a town that has high barriers to entry. Last year, we were able to lower our tax rate to eighteen dollars because we actually had some new growth for the first time, and God knows how long. We wanna, we've talked about really wanting to get Coolidge done, getting to our ten percent. When I talked to the developers to try to do something on Coolidge and introduce them to somebody to talk about this passive house, they said, that's a non-starter. We can't afford to do that on a development the size of a hundred and twenty units. It's especially when there's an affordable component to it. So we've got to be very careful when we consider going above and beyond on building codes. I, I fully support that if developers can do this on a seven hundred and sixty-eight unit development in Newton, absolutely, I'm sure it makes sense. But a hundred and twenty units of affordable house of twenty-five percent affordable, no, it, the costs do not work. I work in the construction industry. I know that they're not there yet. I, I'm afraid to, like I said, we already have above and beyond title five from the board of health. We already have stricter regulations than a lot of the state regulations. I'm afraid if we do this, we continue to stop any new growth in our town completely. And I think that's probably the goal of a number of people, but it's not my goal.
Marion, you had your hand up next.
All right, it's a good follow-on to what George said. My understanding is that this bylaw change would apply to new construction of single-family homes. It would not apply to a forty B development. Or any of the kinds of developments that are under state regulations. Is that, is that correct?
I, that, that's a good question, because it, it's adopted locally, but it's a state building code option. So I'm actually not sure, but I think it would still apply.
Yeah, that's my sense, too, is it's multifamilies and it's even commercial.
Oh, even, even if it's a forty B?
Even if it's a forty B, because it is a state, it's part of the state building code that we are adopting.
Uh huh, well, if it's a state building code, does it matter whether we adopt it or not? I mean, I think it's great to have passive houses, no question about that.
It's a state building code, but it's, it's a local option.
And keep in mind, we've already.
Not every town will have this.
And keep in mind, we've already opted into the stretch code. And so, you know, these, these high stringencies are coming down the pike regardless. It's just, there's this additional, you know, these additional adders on top of that. That are included in the specialized code such as including solar panels. And honestly, George, you're going to the hers rating for, under the stretch code versus the specialized code is going to be the same. With, with some of these scenarios. But what we're, the reason why we're pushing for, for the specialized code is because there's going, it's going to be kind of a more regulated. Paradigm that you're going to be building under. And so, but you're still gonna be beholden to some, to some very low hers. You know, ratings for, for new construction or substantial renovation. It's not gonna be as much for, 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 you know, a thousand-plus foot renovations as, as new construction. But regardless, this is, this is coming down the pike.
Yeah, well, I'm gonna speak next. I'm sorry, George, but I agree with George. I, I, our biggest problem in Sherburne right now is we don't have enough affordable housing. So, period. And that, and then if we're not in that ten percent threshold, then any forty Bs can come to down. So, I, even if it's a minor difference, I, I think we have to think very hard and long. About whether we want to do anything that would make it more difficult to build afford. I'm not actually worried about the cost of other development. I'm worried about affordable housing. If we make it too hard to put affordable housing units in town, it's gonna be bad for the town. Because we'll have more forty Bs as we're seeing. We won't have control over our local codes. They won't matter. Because the forty B will bypass them all. So, I, I, I didn't mean to interrupt you, George, but I'm concurring with what you said. So, Paul, you're, I do the select board comments first before all the other comments. So Paul, you have your hand up again.
I just want to remind you that the question is to whether we've put this on the warrant or not, and they can get ten signatures and present it as a citizen article. The point that you're making and the points that George are making are all good and I respect them, but they really go to the merits of whether or not this should be adopted. Not whether or not we should extend the courtesy to a hard-working committee to put an article that they've worked on, on the warrant, so that the voters can make a decision.
So the issue. I can agree with you that on, with that, Paul. I said it on the last one. I didn't, Nancy's article, I wouldn't probably support this one, but. I, I said it before, and I'm gonna be consistent. I'm always consistent that if we want to let the citizens. But I want them to be truly informed and not, you know, on what true construction costs are when it comes to this stuff.
See, I, my, I differ, and that's why I voted, I'm being consistent in the opposite direction, I guess. I, I, I won't sponsor an article that, that I think is not in the town's best interest. I won't ha- have us be the sponsor for it. So, that's my position. So, we have, the firsthand that was up was J D H. Can you identify yourself, J D H? I don't know who you are.
Jeff, hey, George, how about now, can you hear me?
Oh, is that John, John, is that you?
Yeah, hi, it's John.
John Hyde?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, John, I didn't, I didn't know you're.
We're on the office, we use our initials, that's what I was, I was in that presume.
All right.
But I, so just real quick, so of those ten thousand units of passive house, certified passive house units in Massachusetts. The majority of them are actually affordable. And.
Say that again.
We're having trouble with your audio, you're.
Multifamily housing to build the passive house standard, and that's, sorry, can you guys hear me better now?
That's better, yeah, that's better.
Okay, sorry. So I would, I just wanted to say that the majority of the ten thousand units in Massachusetts that are certified passive house products. Are affordable housing. That's actually been the big mover in the state. So most developers that are building in eastern Massachusetts are building to the passive house standard. And that was highly motivated by the incentives from Mass Save. They offer money for energy modeling. They offer money for each unit, and then they offer money for the units once they're certified. And then if you exceed the passive house standard, they give you even more money. You know, and they're doing this in an effort to electrify these buildings, you know, because they, they have to be mindful of the demands of the grid in the future. So they're, so they're basically working, that's ever-source this funding mass save. So they're highly incentivized in these units. They want passive house buildings to reduce the amount of energy that these buildings are using, so that there's less demand on the grid. And in, in Mark Development, that building, the new, the Northland Newton project, it's actually. They're actually gonna build one building as a passive house building, and then did a cost study on the project. And then, so of, of the eight hundred or so, there's a hundred and forty of them are actually affordable housing. And they decided they're gonna do the, the whole development as passive house, because it made sense. When you, the operational costs of these buildings are so much lower, you know, at like sixty percent to ninety percent lower than a, a normal building. So your, your operational savings are such that any little cost premium that you may have. You're gonna recoup within a couple of years, just by the fact that you have the operational savings. And then in Sherburne, anybody that's building a house, any custom quality home builder is already gonna build a nice tight house with a nice air barrier, proper installation. And in doing that, you, the result is you get to have a smaller HVAC system. Heat pump technologies come a long way, so you can have a nice comfortable home, temperature stays the same all day. And the beauty of a nice, small mechanical system and electrical load is that you can then throw a couple of solar panels in the house. And it can supply your energy demand with, with some local onsite behind the meter solar. So, I, I, I've, I'm building a passive house project right now. I'm very familiar. There's tons of cost data. It's now in Massachusetts. There's a lot from Pittsburgh. And it's, it ma- it makes sense. And, and the Coolidge development, I, I talked to the father and the son on that development. And the son was all in, the father was a little reluctant, because he was, it was new to him, he wasn't familiar with it. But if, but if you look at the trend of the number of passive house products that are coming on in Massachusetts across the country, and especially up in Canada and over in Europe. It's, it's not, it's not really a complicated concept. It's just. Airtight building with some insulation to reduce your mechanical loads, and then you can electrify with some heat pumps. And then offset your electricity demand with solar. So it makes total sense.
We get it, John. I think you've made the point. I, I appreciate your input. Michael, go ahead. I, the point here is whether we're. Yeah, I get it. On, on, on the warrant, but I appreciate your input, John.
Yeah.
Michael, do you want to make a quick comment?
Thanks.
Yeah, I mean, John, just to say that John works in the business. I guess to your, I'm gonna possibly repeat some of what John said.
Please don't do that, because I don't.
But the problem is just that you, Jeff, you, Jeff made an incorrect, you've, you, you have some incorrect logic about even your own personal thinking about. That you can't get affordable housing, because if it's the standard in here in Sherborne, all affordable projects will have to meet it. And clearly, many affordable housing projects are coming in successfully. With, with, under a passive house design, which is only part of what they can do under the specialized code. See, your logic that the specialized code is gonna cause a problem for affordable housing in Sherborne is, I think, faulty. And the fact that we will just basically attract developers and forty B projects that know how to do the project correctly. And we have a commitment to meet about how to make these projects last for thirty, forty years. We need to have things as soon as possible meet a better, more stringent environmental issues, which are got to the climate crisis as.
I appreciate the lecture.
So therefore, I will, because I, I felt like, and even in your case, George, you work in the business. There are lots of evidence about the fact that the cost as John has worked on, so that there's a lot of other evidence. You know, I'm not necessarily trying to, I'd like to convert you with a future point to actually agree with this thing. But I understand that you have a motion in front of you. That's a different type there. But since you expressed your opinions that way, I feel like you have to realize that there's a lot of other evidence contrary to what both of you.
We, we've heard you. Thank you. Paul, you have your hand up.
No, I, I said my piece. I.
Are you all right?
I want to make a motion to put this on the warrant.
I think I did make. Clarify one thing that Michael said. I do support passive house. Clarify one thing that Michael said. I do support passive house development, but I think it's appropriate for larger developments that.
Yeah.
No, but I'm saying there's a lot of evidence.
Michael, Michael, you have not been recognized. Michael, we've had enough. Thank you.
Uh, what I was saying was, it makes sense for the large development in Newton. I worry, just based on my conversation with developers, on a hundred and twenty units, or even another big part of our new growth in town are the single family infill houses where these builders are really, you know, tight on their costs. And on a single family, I mean, I know John said it's just the insulation. I'm going to have a conversation with John and I are good friends. I'm going to talk to John about it. He's more knowledgeable than anybody else in this Zoom about.
No, I know John's very knowledgeable. And Michael, I'm not going to recognize you again. So put your hand down. Yep, I know. Paul, do you, can you repeat the motion?
To to sponsor the, uh, article to adopt the passive house.
So you're, uh, as before asking that the select board be the sponsor for this, uh, warrant article?
On behalf of the.
Okay.
I think he said he wanted the coordinator, but whether the coordinator or the the E S C, whichever.
Both of us, sustainability coordinators and the Energy and Sustainability Committee. Sorry to interrupt, just to be clear.
Okay.
That's my motion.
All right, do I have a second?
Yes, I raised my hand to second the motion of Paul.
Okay, so.
I would like further discussion.
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry, Eric. Go ahead.
I forget those who say the least often get recognized. So, remind me, this is only my fifth town meeting on the board, right? So we vote to put this on the warrant, everything else. But then we still get a vote. We still get a, um, vote whether we actually want to sponsor or not. That's with advisory, correct?
Right. There's a difference between we're we're voting right now to sponsor it. We're not supporting.
Yeah, I get that. I get that. I just want, but we get that chance to vote when we have that all-day marathon thing, right?
Right. That's when we vote whether we support the articles or not.
If I'm fifty fifty, I want more information. I gotta be honest. I'm almost going to kick this down the road and I'm very much on on the cusp of this. I see great sides in both things and, I just want to lo- look into it more.
Okay, so we have a motion, uh, and it's been seconded. So Marion.
Aye.
George.
I'll vote aye to put it on the warrant so people can discuss it.
Paul.
Aye.
To Eric.
Aye.
And I am nay. Good. Okay, so now we're on to the, um, next one, which now is the one I said before, which I think is the, uh, um, possible article on combining the collector and, uh, um,
Treasure.
Treasure.
I I asked Jeremy to put this on if you.
Yeah.
Talk about Jeff or?
Yeah, you, I have a few things to say, but you're welcome to go first.
Okay, I just, um, we've talked about this and we've taken a lot of steps. I'm glad to see Corey Lincoln's on here from the Governance Task Force because, this this has been something that was brought up by the Collins Report since two thousand twelve. It's an efficiency thing in town. I I think we've, we've made steps in the right direction by making our, um, treasurer appointed. I think it's time that these offices are combined so we can have efficiencies. It's that the case in many other towns. Um, there's, there's no reason at this point that we shouldn't be able to do it. I've spoken to both the treasurer and the collector, who think it's a good idea. I think there's some some wrinkles to to smooth out, but both the current treasurer and collector, would be on board for something like this. So I, uh, I think it's time that we finally take this step. And we take baby steps in Sherburne, but I think this is one that's a long way coming. Um, so that's why I wanted to bring it up for discussion tonight.
Yeah, no, we definitely talked about it. I'm still opposed to it. You and I have had this chat for years. I I honestly don't believe there's similar jobs at all. They, there are many towns that have them combined. I'm aware of that. But I actually think it'd be better to combine the finance director and, um, uh, collector and the and the tax collector or the collector and the and the finance director rather than the treasurer. The treasurer to me is a sort of, you know, they're they're investing in their, uh, borrowing. Whereas the the finance director is the one that's really managing the budgets and the accounting department. And then tax collector is, it's kind of like a, uh, it's called a controller sometimes in a corporate world where they're actually then, um, you know, issuing the invoices for property taxes and, collecting them. So I I I like the efficiency part, but I wouldn't combine the treasurer. I would combine the finance director and the collector myself. But one thing I would say is that we now have just appointed Deb, you know, for whatever it is, the eighth time. I I would rather that we not consider this this year till we figure out what we're doing with the finance director also too. I I sort of feel like we're only looking at part of the puzzle here. I don't necessarily disagree with everything you're trying to target, but, we need to figure out what to do with the finance director more urgently, I think, because we have a situation where we've had an interim for, whatever it's been, a year and a half. So it may be that we combine all three or that we, I don't know what we would do, but, that's the only hesitation I have here is that I'm not sure that we're ready to do this right now.
Um, can, I was, I had a discussion when I went in and met with Jeremy about this and and.
Yeah.
Talked and part of that, part of my point with him was also, moving forward with posting a permanent finance director position that hopefully some internal candidates would, candidate or candidates would apply for. And I think that's also an important piece in getting the finance director in place. But I'm just looking at the recommendation from the Collins Report, from the Governance Task Force and from what other towns have done. And that's the treasurer collector position that you'll see almost everywhere at this point.
Well, I'll make one other point that I recognize here. My my other point was, you know, if we go ahead with making the assistant town administrator, the H R director too, I would kind of like that role to be involved. If that's the H R director, they would logically be involved in some of the analysis of whatever we do here.
And this is going to take some time. One other thing, Eric, before, sorry to interrupt one more time. This would obviously time, wouldn't be something implemented immediately. You've got, uh, a collector who was just elected, I think, last year to a three-year term. So you've.
Yeah.
Time to transition this into into a combined position. It's not something that's going to happen immediately. Um, and and I think that that was, that's an important piece to think about as well.
Go ahead, Eric.
Yeah, I mean, I I do support this as boring concept. I I understand what you're saying, Jeff, when you compare it to the private sector. And I'm not going to pretend to be an expert at this. You know, my mother served as both the treasurer and the collector at separate times and told me that it could be combined. And served herself as very first treasurer collector that they ever had as well. So I did a search around the communities. I'm struggling to have a community where they're not combined. It is common, it's such an industry standard, it has to work. I can't believe that we somehow know better than every other community that surrounds us. Millis, Medfield, uh, Dover, and big ones like Framingham, they're all combined. No matter what size, no matter what demographic, they're all combined. I just think it's like, it just has to work. It can't be a failed combination when like, you know, every town was separate back in the sixties. Now every town is combined. I just think it's time that we kind of join.
I think it's the wrong combination, but I I hear what you're saying. I'm aware of that.
But you don't see any other accountants. I suspect because accountant is kind of a third-party check on the other finances. Maybe that's why they don't do it. I don't know. But you don't see the accountant, uh, combined with the treasurer anywhere else. I can't find it. So.
So I'm going to let, uh, I see your hand, Corey, but I'm, Paul's got his hand up first. I always recognize the select board discussion first. Go ahead, Paul.
So I was part of a board that, uh, voted to put this on a warrant, maybe, uh, ten years ago. And it went before town meeting and it went before, it went, it went into the process. There was a very convincing, uh, uh, presentation from the Collins Institute and from D O R, why these two positions should be combined. Concern I have is I like our present, uh, tax collector. I like our present treasurer. I want to be sure they're protected, with with some job security going forward. So I want to see that in the final language as we, as we, uh, proceed on this, that that, uh, they're not shown the door because they're doing a a great job. But the position should become combined. I'm entirely in agreement with that. And they should also be appointed. So I would move to, uh, extend the courtesy to, George, who has brought this up, to put this on the warrant without requiring, uh, uh, signatures.
Okay, do I have a second for that motion?
I'll second it, but I want to hear from, oh, for the discussion, I'd love to hear from Corey.
Sure.
Hi, um, I'm actually here because of capital budget. I I wasn't planning on speaking on this issue. But, um, if you look in the report that the Structure of Town Government Committee filed with the town, uh, part of that report is I myself, um, reviewed every town in Massachusetts. And one of the things I I looked for was if they had a combined treasurer and collector, um, uh, office. And it correctly is both Paul and George and Eric have said, the vast majority of towns do have that. Um, I do recall when several years ago, even before the Structure of Town Government Committee, uh, put the election of the treasurer on the warrant, there was a combined motion of at this, in the same motion, making, uh, the collector treasurer a combined job and making it, uh, appointed. And it was defeated. And when the Structure of Town Government Committee looked at it, we kind of decided, we took the baby step approach and said, why have it have, these two, at the time, rather controversial, um, issues in the same motion? We'll take one first and deal with the other later. And the one we chose to do was the appointed, not elected. So in fact, we didn't make a formal recommendation for the combination of treasurer and tax collector. But it is quite true. The vast majority of all towns have it that way.
So we have a mo- your your hand's no longer up, right, Paul?
Well, I I made a motion, but I just want to be sure that.
Okay, so do we have a second? I think you checked it. So then, um, uh, Marion.
Aye.
George.
Aye.
Eric.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
And I'm a. Okay, so then now we're on to the, um, one you're here for, I think, Corey. All right. What's the next one? Is the, no, right now it's just the warrant checklist, but that's, uh,
We want to review the warrant checklist.
Yeah, yeah. But that's one of the ones. What was the one you were here for, Corey? It's, um, the one about capital budget, wasn't it? Capital budget?
Yes, yeah.
But was, as long as you're here, why don't we just do that one and then we'll go back and go through all of the, uh, uh, warrant checklist?
Okay, I appreciate that.
So, so, uh, but it, there's, is, um, is it, let's see here. I'll find you. All right. So this is the, um, general bylaw, chapter six, capital budget. Uh, can you describe the article for us?
Sure, it's the change of date in which, uh, the, any capital budget requesters, are filing their detailed data and analysis. That's the first part. And the second part is changing the threshold for capital item from ten thousand to twenty-five thousand.
Yep. And what the date, because the operating budgets are always due essentially the end of the year. And is it changed it to that same date?
No, um, what happened, we discussed this both in advisory and in capital budget. And actually, Dan Sickel is out of town.
I talked to him today.
Steve Si, I don't know whether he's out there.
He's here. He's here.
Okay, I'll leave him. He he can talk for advisory at the end.
Or he was here.
He was there. Yeah, advisory and capital budget both started talking about this last year. That we, um, according to the town bylaw, the deadline for filing for a capital budget item is February the first, which means that we have both advisory and capital budget at the same time, doing, interviewing the proponent, doing the research, asking if they have looked at all the alternatives, et cetera, et cetera. And we're actually doing the same work at the same time. And it seemed to be inefficient and really duplicative. So we really thought that we, to be more orderly, we ought to have the capital consideration first, collect all the data, have the analysis, then pass that and vote on our recommendation. Then pass that information along to the select board and to the advisory committee, who will then vote their own recommendations, but they don't need to duplicate the work that capital has already done. And the problem, we actually thought, and the problem is if the deadline is February first, they can't possibly get all that done, sequentially before the town report or the advisory report has to go to the printer in March. So we thought this year we would make a request for voluntary cooperation, that the budget makers would have a January first deadline. And what happened with that, first of all, January first is always a holiday. Uh, and then we also had one budget maker who objected, um, quite emphatically, that their operating budgets were also due on January first and that that was just too much on staff. It was a pylon. And said, actually, December first would be better. So we talked about it in capital budget and decided that we would recommend December first. We realized that there, the more you push back the date, the softer the final number is going to be. But at least it gives us some sort of, uh, baseline that we could plan ahead. And we can always get the final absolute number when we're doing the mo- when advisory is doing the motions for town meeting. So that's why we want to recommend the change from February first back to December first.
Yeah, I like that proposal for two. One, the original February first was based on Groundhog Day. We would then come out the next day and decide if we saw our shadow, that we wouldn't fund the capital project. So that's how that was picked.
Oh, okay.
But, uh, but I like the December first because I like reviewing it at the same time. Because then you have the budget maker come in and they can present one time both operating capital budgets. But I understand the conflict with having the due dates be the same. But that means like in early to mid-January, like we're meeting next, uh, weekend, we can re- presumably review both with capital budget already having done some of the homework. And then you only bring the budget maker in once to present both, it seems like.
Well, and there's really only principally three, four, I should say, budget makers that routinely have, capital items. Yeah.
Well, include the schools too, but yeah.
Yeah, well, that was my fourth.
Yeah.
Police, fire and, uh, DPW.
Okay.
Now, the other one we wanted to do was the threshold for capital. And we, the current threshold of ten thousand dollars was established in nineteen eighty-seven. And we actually have a very sharp member of our committee who figured out what that is in today's dollars. And it's twenty-six thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars and twenty-seven cents. So we're, we want to change it to twenty-five thousand. Um, the report that came out from this date, on capital improvement planning guides, when they give a template for doing, uh, uh, capital, um, planning guide, they use twenty-five thousand as the threshold, the the, uh, definition of what is capital. Some of our surrounding towns use, still use ten, some use twenty-five. Weston uses twenty-five, Dover uses ten. But I think pretty clearly it's just a matter of time, um, that they will change it. We've had this since eighty-seven.
Didn't we used to have a sort of a dual criteria? It was a, it was ten thousand dollars, but or anything with more than a three-year useful life or something to that effect?
Five years.
Five years. Is that what it is?
Years.
So it'll be five years now?
Yeah, but twenty-five thousand.
Okay.
And then the the third issue on this is that, and and Steve can talk to this, um, is that there, the advisory committee has some reluctance to sponsor article. We were going to co-sponsor it. But they have some reluctance to sponsoring articles because they think it's inappropriate. Because eventually they'll have to make it a recommendation on all articles.
Yeah.
So we would, we're going to respectfully request that the selectmen partner with us, and that we, um, co-sponsor the article with CBC.
Well, Marion left early, so we are selectmen now, but we're the select board.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm an old timer. What can I say?
So I I want to make a a motion to place this proposed article on the warrant and, uh, thank, uh, Corey for coming forward with this idea and these improvements. I think they're excellent, all of them. But the issue isn't whether we like it or we don't like it. The question is, do we want to extend the courtesy to the capital budget committee? And not require them to go get ten signatures. To me, uh, we should put it on the warrant. So the motion is to put it on the warrant.
Okay, and, uh, before we, Stephen Si, you had your hand up. Do you want to comment before we vote?
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to say, um, like Corey said, um, advisory, we don't, um, traditionally sponsor articles, so we didn't really want to sponsor anything. But, uh, in informal straw poll, uh, advisory was in support of of this article. There was a couple of people that, uh, weren't as keen on the raising the, uh, threshold to twenty-five thousand. But still, it was a a strong majority, uh, was in favor in the straw poll.
Okay, so do we have a second for Paul's motion?
Second.
Okay, uh, Marion left, so, um, George.
Aye.
Eric.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
And I am aye as well. So, um, thank you, Corey. So.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Shall we, I don't know, there's. Shall we? I don't know. There's mostly articles are sort of placeholders for our standard articles, OPEB, trust fund and that kind of thing. Do people want to?
It's late. Hey, Jeff, I would think maybe we could go through the checklist next week and get. Because we still have to go through the Sherburne housing, Sherburne homes thing. So.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe we could do the checklist next week. Is that okay with everybody?
Well, I'd like to 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 put the 350 and. Whatever it's called.
Three, 325. Is it 325 or 350?
I think it's 350. Article on the warrant.
All right, so make the motion. You made the motion. I'll second it so we can move ahead.
But what? I'm sorry, he broke up.
He's the article that's Mary Moore is listed under the name. It's funding 300. I think it's the 350th anniversary celebration. It's 325 on the checklist.
350.
Yeah. So Paul's recommending that we vote on that one. So George. I seconded it.
It's a no brainer.
Yeah.
We had a great time at the 325th. Let me put it that way. So if we have the same kind of good time.
So let's vote on this one. George.
Hi.
Eric.
Hi.
Paul.
Hi.
And I am I as well. So that one's been voted on also. So I agree with George, you know. Do we want to do this in the budget meeting on the 14th or do you prefer to wait?
I think that makes sense. Let's do it. Let's do it on the 14th, run through the checklist then.
Yeah.
Kind of focused on town meeting stuff. I think that that's a good idea.
Yeah, why don't we do that? So then I think we all have any select board reports left. I don't know.
What about the Sherburne housing? Did?
Oh, the thing there, Marion had to leave early.
Do we have to approve the letter or is there?
No, we don't have to do anything. What what happened is we've gotten all now all of the boards and committees. And Marion's going to take the lead, but I'm going to work on her. So we'll, we create the executive summary that we actually submit. This one's not mass housing, it's DHCD. And so we wrote a letter over the holidays. I think you all got a copy of it saying we wanted till January 23rd. We had to do it twice because they said they don't give specific extensions like mass housing does. But tell for us to tell them how long we needed. And so we said, well, we need till January 23rd, which was our first request. So and I left two voice messages with Franklin who came here, but he didn't respond. So we have to the 23rd of January and so we'll on the 19th or me on the 19th, we will have the final. Letter that we write, which will then attach all the letters that we got from the different committees. But we'll create an executive summary that distilled it down. So but we're just letting people know the status and then once we've assembled all those. Comments into one executive summary, we can give it, probably give it earlier than two days before. May give it, you know, the week Friday, the week before, so you can read through it before the 19th. And then if we review it and vote on the 19th, then we can easily submit by the 23rd of of January. Paul, did you have a comment on that?
No, my hand was up from before.
Or I never can tell. I never can tell.
I'll take it down. Sorry.
I thought there was something was painted on your bookshelf there. I didn't know. So. Anyway, so that's the plan. Just letting you know the status. We do have, I believe, all the boards and committees now have submitted their documents. So we'll be working on that with with Jeremy's leadership also. Anybody have any select board reports then?
Just a quick one that we did finally kick off the negotiations last night with the teachers union. So it's starting a lot later this year than it did three years ago. Just because there's a backlog of contracts with other towns. Things have gone badly in a lot of other towns. In fact, I saw yesterday on the news, there's some proposed legislation to allow teachers unions to strike that they're considering.
Saw that. I saw that on the news. I didn't read it though.
So so, yeah, it's hopefully ours doesn't devolve into what's happened in some other communities. But we did kick it off last night and next next when not next Wednesday, the following Wednesday, I've got to give a presentation on financials of the town. So Jeremy, I may just touch base with you on if I need any information for my presentation. I've got I've got to show how that I got to show them, you know, what's realistic for what we can afford. So.
Yeah. Well, only select board report I have is I did walk through the library, whatever day that was Wednesday. And they are, things have started moving in there. So it's a very positive sign.
They do they have an open, a soft opening date or anything yet?
I don't know that they have a soft opening date yet. They I mean, they're really just moving in crates and things, you know, but. All the new furniture will be the vendors that we buy that new furniture from will be assembled now by them. But we'll have to figure out, we're also have a lot of things. I realize going through a lot of things that we probably were in a hurry to pack up the old building. And I'm not sure we're going to need all of them. So there's going to be a little bit of, we're bringing basically everything that was taken out. But we'll see how we deal with.
Sure, there's things that were packed seven years ago that we.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So we'll see what happens there. But that large 150 person room is filled with things. And then the children's wing is filled with new furniture that they'll build out for that space. So they're working through that. So. Any other select board reports? Jeremy, did you have a town administrator report or any updates you want to?
Yeah, just a few updates. I just I wanted to congratulate Chiefs Galvin and Ward for the successful implementation of transitioning to the regional dispatch center.
Oh, yeah.
On January 3rd, pretty seamlessly, probably, you know, in a good way, nobody noticed. So it went well and talking with with them and just wanted to congratulate them with all their hard work that they put into that, that it went so well. Also wanted to give congratulations as well to Gino, Sean and Addie May for receiving a complete streets grant from Mastiot for $350,000. That would go towards the construction of a roundabout at Maple and Wall, Washington Street. Also wanted to make the board aware that Jeanne and I are going to start. Working with a vendor, getting some proposals to update the town's website. You'll recall the town received a $30,000 grant to help with that update of the town's website. So we're going to get some proposals on what can happen, but we really appreciate any input that anybody has as far as what kind of functionality. Or, you know, things that you'd want to add and see on the website. So there'll be more to come on that. But I just wanted to put the feeler out that that we are moving forward with that and it would really appreciate any input that anybody.
What what input I'll give you quickly is, you know, right now, we can't see the YouTube. In the old days, we had minutes for every committee, but if you want to see the YouTube recording of a meeting, you got to just search YouTube for that. It can be handy if we could just drill down on a board in town and 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 then just have the YouTube link be there also.
Yeah.
You may only need it in one place. And if you went to that place, then you could go through the YouTube listing of each date. But it would be better than having to like Google YouTube and find, you know, Board of Health meeting or or ConCon meeting. So.
Yeah, the other thing that I think could be made more prominent, just if we're going to throw out ideas, think Pam will like this one. It's to make the collectors like the the online payment window very easily found on the very front page. That's something that a lot of people use and and should we should not have to dig through the collectors page to get to it if we could just do it right on the front page. That would be important.
Great. Yeah, and the vendor that's going to help us, they may have sort of a checklist or questionnaire, what we might want. So we'll we'll make sure that we inform the board, bring, get that out there.
Do they have they listed like what towns they've done too? Because it might be interesting to go to like, have they done five towns in the last six months? We go to their websites and see what they look like, get a feel for what they've done elsewhere.
Our original, our first take is going to go with Civic Plus, who's their current website vendor and they service many other communities around. I see Jeanne has her hand up.
Yeah, she does. Go ahead, Jeanne.
Um, I spoke with one of our reps at Civic Plus today and he showed me Needham, Stovers. Holliston, I I believe it's Needham has a a button on the front page of their website that is YouTube for the meetings. And you just click on it.
Cool.
And most of them, the pay online is this pretty prominent circle right there that you can find pretty quickly. So. They'll give us a list of different towns that they've done and people can look at them.
Great.
So what to come on that? And the final announcement, the Farm Pond Advisory Committee is moving forward with the Farm Pond Watershed Base Plan. Those proposal, the proposal that's grant funded has been been approved and, you know, it's a. Multi-year project. So the first phase of that will be beginning through that committee.
Good. All right, I don't have anything else. So we have a motion to adjourn. So I think Miss Miss Tyler is wants us to make a motion to say hi to her first.
I just want to say Happy New Year to you all. I look forward to the 350th. I look forward to having the Historical Society Museum available for people in the 350th.
That's a good plan. I like that.
That that's a good point.
Happy New Year, Suzie.
Thanks, Suzie.
I have to say, your your website in Sherbon is so much better. From a couple of the websites that I go out here to look at. Yours, you can actually follow through. Maybe it's because I'm used to it. But your agendas for all your meetings, the agendas have a link to a Zoom if it's available for a Zoom like tonight. Versus here in my new hometown, I can't call it that. You have to go to the agenda, you have to go to the calendar, then you have to go to a third place to find a link. So I will say on that point, what Sherbon is doing with that website is very good. And I and I got to see a couple of people. I swung through the Sherbon transfer cycle to the center today. Got to see a couple of people, which was fun. Linda, Paul, Linda was very surprised to see me there today.
She told me she's you're still on the cemetery committee.
I was there doing research just last week. I'm still there all the time.
Thank you for your caring.
Exactly 10 o'clock, so I'm going to move.
With the trash.
All right, so.
New year.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I made a motion.
Did you make the motion?
We have we have less than a minute to get it done by 10.
All right, let's just vote. We'll pretend it was seconded. George.
Hi.
Paul.
Hi.
Eric.
Nay.
And I am I, yeah, that's a Chuck Yan approach. I'm I as well. And the Bruins game comes on at 10:30 because they're in LA.
I will be sleeping by then.
All right.
Have a good night.
Thanks, guys.